Mr. Mayor, I have a request to move Resolution Dash Forty-Six up closer. Do you want to do that now or after we come back from the executive session?
Well, when we convene and after you have your introductory, I was taken care of. Before you went to the executive session, it would be appropriate to move it at that time.
Okay.
Just before you go into the session.
What I need is for somebody to make a motion to move Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six from where its present location to just after the plaque presentation from the table.
Mr. Mayor, I meant we should call the meeting to order first and then go through that.
No, what I... So somebody will... This is our approximate, Mr. Hall, self-papers, we'll see if we can use the ballroom.
Yes, Mr. Hall. And what we'll do tonight is, since we do have some council members listening, and I'm sure they're probably going to be here tonight, be here after you get out of executive session, so that our voting system is good and active, I'm going to ask that those of you that are sitting next to empty seats have, press their flashing buttons when they're flashing to show that they're present.
Okay.
They won't hurt anything if they don't come.
Okay.
And then if they do come, then we'll be current for voting.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so your lights should be flashing. All right, we'll start with Mayor Natale.
Here.
Mayor Co-Town Snyder.
Here.
Councilman Moreno.
I'll punch his button.
You punch the button. And what I can do is I can indicate on the minutes with my arrow. Councilman Benson.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Carson.
Here.
Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilman Johnson. Thank you. Councilman McLeod.
Here.
Councilman Bullock. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you have the floor?
Thank you. Do you do a voting scan?
Okay, we'll do a voting scan from all silence and adjutant members say in the...
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic of Alexandria, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of the world.
Thank you. Yes, but I currently do a motion to move this section.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, move approval to Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six from its present location on the agenda until after the plaque presentation.
Go ahead, second.
Second motion.
Mr. Mayor, second to the motion. I request a voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. And the reason that that is moved is because it's appointing our administrative hearing officers, and that way we can take care of them while they're in the meeting. Motion passes, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you want to make a motion to go into executive session? Uh, no, uh, no. It's, uh... Here it is. Can you...
I'm sorry, I was not ready to hear the motion.
Whoops, go on, that's great, can you go over this part? And then she was on the screen.
Oh, thank you, Jason. Yes, I'd like to go to executive session concerning a personnel issue regarding the annual evaluation of City Manager for Service, CRS Twenty Four Dash Six Dash Four O Two F Four and F.
Hey, Mr. McLeod. Second motion, have a motion in a second to an executive session, starting discussion. Seeing none, we have a voice vote, all those in favor, signify the same aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. We will leave the executive session, process may or may not.
And for the... And for the minutes, we'd like to indicate that Councilman Moreno has arrived and time is barred.
Thank you. If we could just get about ten minutes before Mr. Blair joins us in time. Okay, just for setup before that. More as you can copy, guys. Oh, oh. And you know, we're in this right before the session. And we actually started this here at five thirty, because we went into a executive session working on evaluations, so there won't be any talk about that. And trying to talk a little bit. But it's not burning at all. I did receive a nice letter from the Speaker, Carroll of the state, thanking or giving a congratulations to Mr. Flannery for being picked for an NLC position. But that's really nice. Congratulations on that. And we're not coming back this year. Should we run to the other end of the room? That would happen. Oh, I think I hear her. We've already done a roll call, and everybody was here, so we don't have to do that again. That wasn't burning.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, it is, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if you would like to indicate that, for the minutes, that Mr. Johnson has arrived and so have Mr. Bullock.
Perfect, yes, both of them, and so we are now all nine sitting at the dais.
And Mr. Moreno.
Yes. And if staff could pass the microphone out, we can introduce the audience. Mitch Black.
Robert Lakeform.
David Foster.
Pat Librius.
Bob Dollar.
Nancy Dyer.
Janet Keasong.
Laura Zabiza.
Danny Thomas.
David Thomas.
Ellen Howe.
Yeah, also.
Larry Dahn.
Tom Porga.
Larry Dusson.
Steve Douglas.
Chrissy Douglas.
Troy Bishop.
Katie Belfort.
Roy Rock, City Evaluation.
Carol, our past election.
Teresa Alon.
Jerry Dahl.
Mike McKee.
Tom Reed.
Rick Bush.
Mike Brown, Parks and Recreation.
Paul Ewing, Parks and Recreation.
Steve Tennessee Flannery.
Flannery for Community Development.
Mr. Ryan Cordean, City Government's Evaluations.
Jason Losley, Finance.
Bill Howard, Information Technology.
Phil Archer, Chief of Police.
Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Target.
Nadia Miller, Deputy City Manager.
Tom Aker, Deputy City Manager.
And Howell, City Manager's Office.
Thank you. Like to welcome you back to your back. Good to see you back out and around again. Just so the audience knows, we did move Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six from its current location to right after the plaque presentation. So we've done that prior to our own executive session. Tonight, Census Bureau, I'd like to officially recognize the City Council for City's efforts for promoting Two Thousand and Ten Census. The City Manager, Mayor Flannery, please introduce the fact, right here. From the Census Bureau to come forward and present the plaque. And... Good evening, how are you doing?
Good evening, I'm great, thank you very much.
Good to be here, huh, under budget.
I think it's been a really good year, especially for Commerce City. And Mayor Natale, the City Council, City Employees, and guests, thank you very much for inviting me here to speak to you this evening. And the purpose of my visit is twofold. And again, I've had my greatest, some of the U.S. Census Bureau, and I work for state and local governments in Denver metro area, northeastern Colorado, and Wyoming. And I had some really great partners from Commerce City, who's certainly one of my very best partners. I wanted to give you a brief overview of Census Twenty Ten and what is next, and present a thanking plaque to Commerce City for instituting a very robust complete count campaign. Through your efforts, spearheaded by Brian McBroom, the Director of Community Development, Commerce City was very successful in educating and motivating residents in the city to fill out mail-back their Census questionnaire. Brian also served on the State of Colorado Complete Count Committee, and there were very few city representatives on that committee. So hats off to Brian, and thank you to all the city staff and other volunteers who assisted in the outreach effort. And then a shout-out to Lisa Caiglos, Ms. Ryan Cordero, Ross Hillker, for all of that additional efforts to communicate to the residents of Commerce City the importance of being counted. Now, the good news is, the male participation rate for Commerce City residents was seventy-five percent this time around, and was sixty-six percent last time around. Now, that's a nine percent increase in those people who repeat their Census questionnaire and they will actually live it back. So we only had to go back to about twenty-five percent of the households. Now, the trend is, it's a downward trend, and most communities in Colorado saw their male participation rates decline, but there were just a few, like Commerce City, and it really paid off to all your outreach efforts. Commerce City's efforts were very, very broad-based, and targeted outreach efforts, promoted the Census in the Hard County community. Outreach activities included English and Spanish posters and co-branded flyers, encouraging people to participate in the Census membership in all of the city. In addition, Commerce City provided free booth space at Darren City and community events, which was incredible. And there were lots of Census Twenty Ten articles posted in, you know, the newspapers and the different communication vehicles that Commerce City has to educate and motivate residents to participate. And Jesus Orazia, he was one of our Hispanic community outreach specialists, worked with several groups within the city of Commerce City that interface with the Hispanic population. Me, Plubel Latino Market, promoted the Census at three different events at their market. They distributed English and Spanish flyers in the grocery bags. Plus, the clerks and store employees wore Census hats and T-shirts one weekend in a grocery spot. The Comodocallash, soccer league, distributed flyers to the Hard County neighborhoods in something we had called March of the Mailbox. And the entire Collash team wore Census T-shirts at headland their soccer games. The Adams County School District distributed flyers, a mail wrap, a promotion to encourage response. And Lisa Diego, she distributed Spanish language flyers in the Villas to the migrant coalition. In addition, churches spoke from the pulpit about that importance of responding to the Census. And they hosted Census presentations as well. Five Commerce City organizations hosted the county questionnaire system site. And they also volunteered to provide testing sites and training sites for potential of the new Census employees. To coincide with my brief presentation, we have distributed a packet of information for you, and it has a very robust PowerPoint presentation with notes. And that note really will be a great reference source for you because it has a lot more detailed public than some of you ever want to know, but I just wanted to make sure that you have that. There's also a co-op sheet regarding the Census and a detailed timeline of our different product releases. The Census Twenty Ten, Robert Rose, the U.S. Census Bureau Director, says, "Just like we can survive without roads and bridges, the country does not function well without updated census data." To distribute funds to areas that most need them and support community decisions about the future. We attempted to count over three hundred and nine million people and a hundred and thirty-four million housing units. Well, that's a result of all of that hard work over a ten-year period. Over four hundred billion dollars is distributed by the federal government to state and local governments and community-based organizations based upon the results. Some key days to remember, the council voted the president, December thirty-first of this year. That's when the congressional seats will be reapportioned. Now, you may be getting calls in the city, all of you, that people are still out there. The Census is almost finished, but it's not quite over. We're doing some quality checks and some quality measurement, which is going to measure the accuracy of the Census. Also, next February through March, Commerce City will get its first look at population counts in the redistricting pilot, goes to the state legislatures to redraw their state legislative districts. When we delivered over a hundred and twenty million questionnaire packages for every one percent of the population, where we didn't have to go to the normal state taxpayers, about eighty-five million dollars. And remember, the Census this time has only ten questions. Ninety percent of the country received their Census questionnaire in the mail. And we, online this time, had a participation feedback program so you could monitor your results on a regular basis, even down to the Census tract or neighborhood level. I think Commerce's response rate was about seventy percent this time around, so Commerce City beat that by five percent. Gosh, my notes, they're right here. I want to show you in your packet, later you can review it, but I prepared a chart with two particular Census tracts in Commerce City that showed the response rate. In one of them, the highest responding Census tract, Eighty-eight Oh One, increased from sixty-six percent to seventy-eight percent in that annual period. And one of our very hard account tracts, it was about the same, it was a slight decline by one percent. But in your packet, you can see where these particular Census tracts are. So the use of that Census data really relates to political power and economic power, advocacy power, community development power, and funding power. And when we release the data, we're going to see the data for not only political areas, the states, the counties, the reservations, the school district, but all those statistical areas. So we'll see data damage Census tract and what group level, even if the traffic analysis go to level. And May of next year, we'll start seeing demographic profiles, so those are going to be some summary statistics. And you have kind of a detailed timeline, and the more detail, when all the summer clouds are going to come out with the Census. Now, don't forget that the long form was replaced by the American Community Survey, and that's all the rich data, the social and economic characteristic data. Would be disability in veterans, got some income, and poverty, and educational attainment. And also measures of neighborhood quality will be in the American Community Survey. So by the end of this year, you can look for Commerce City data, some five-year period estimates, two thousand and five through two thousand and nine, we're going to release those in December. So that'd be an average over five years, it's from Commerce City's social and economic characteristics, and that will illustrate your very positive role. And between the years of the Census, we do population estimates. And you may have heard on the local news recently, we released two thousand and nine population estimates. So in Commerce City, the pop estimate was forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four people. Now, what was it in two thousand? Twenty thousand nine ninety-one. So that's twenty-eight thousand increase in population. So you're going to really want to take a look at that data because that's how you really get to know your community and know how and when to, anywhere to deliver services. Our program that I belong to, Partnership and Data Services, we offer free training. And there's a brochure in your packet, we do presentations, workshops, computer lab training, to help people use and understand and analyze the data. So we'd like to, we're going to come back, I've been talking to Brian already, and come back and perhaps do some training for the city to talk about the new data and how it can be used in different community applications. So thank you very much for partnering with us for Census Twenty Ten. And you were very, very successful in getting good count from Commerce City, and I really enjoyed working with the community. I'd like, Brian, perhaps to come up with the mayor and present a plaque of appreciation to the city. And I also have a couple of letters, one for the mayor and one for Brian, to present.
Could we get, Mr. Romero, I don't know if Mr. compared to vote, oh, you're taking the picture, because you should be in it also. Anybody who wants to vote for him.
And Bill Green.
On behalf of the U.S. Census Bureau, the U.S. Census Bureau, hereby writing by to the Commerce City, that we are a partner and offer appreciation for your support and engagement in the Census Party's stake in the Twenty Ten. So thank you so much for participating in our new partner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your attendance. Thank you all.
A big thank you to all the staff that helped with this, but also an enormous thank you to all the citizens of Commerce City because no matter how hard our staff would have worked, if the city had not cooperated, we wouldn't have near gotten that response. And here in preliminary, forty-eight thousand, and that's five to six thousand more than I thought we were going to save. So that's going to mean big things for us. Mr. McLeod.
I just had a quick question, I obviously have a chance to read the part, but again, thank you so much for the data. It looks like we've got two differing tracts that were from the Census.
Well, we have a lot more Census tracts than that. Those are just two for illustration purposes. One is the highest responding tract, and the other is the lowest responding tract. But those rates, I mean, they were real low rates, you know, throughout Census tracts in different committees, so those were wonderful response rates.
Okay, great, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Benson. Yes, he said that you got a seventy-five percent response rate. Is that to the mail-out, and then he went back to personally visit the other twenty-five percent?
Absolutely right, that's called non-response follow-up. So all of those non-response households, it was a personal visit by Census takers.
How is that seventy-five percent compared to Denver, Aurora, Lakewood?
Well, Aurora's about seventy-two, I think Lakewood's a little higher, maybe seventy-eight, seventy-nine. State of Colorado, seventy percent. City of Denver, I think, was seventy-two, they tied the last time around. Commerce City increased by nine percent, so we had a lot more people through outreach efforts that said, you know, I want to make sure that Commerce City is counted, or uncounted in Commerce City.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you, Jen. Thank you for your time.
Harrison, do you have something?
Well, I was just going to ask you, do you believe we can lead that industry and are you here that others are intent to train and how... Do we need to start today, working on how to give a better accurate rolling expense so that we can lead the seventy-five percent?
Well, I think there are in the planning stages for the next census, you know, as we speak. But who knows what the next census will look like. We're going to have, you know, with our communications devices that we have now, we'll be sure to have internet access, and hopefully we'll have all sorts of strategies for communities to start working early, see where in life they may be, where they're just too nourishing, how can we engage the population through, you know, activists and men, community volunteers, to even a better response rate.
I think that what I learned through this is that more citizens understand how important it is.
Absolutely, education is powerful, and knowledge is power, so... But thank you for sharing this with us. Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, there's only one resolution tonight that required a voice vote, it's Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six. Resolution appointing Teresa... I don't know if I can pronounce it.
Alau.
Alau, yes, okay, terrific, thank you. As the administrative hearing officer, and Gerald Dahl, I know I've got that one right. As an alternate administrative hearing officer, we would, Chair Allen Woods, City Manager, Attorney General, please introduce your staff to open the discussion. Mr. McBroom, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Upon an administrative hearings officer by the City Council, it is necessary to provide deep process to alert violators of certain city codes. Last week, the City Council set administrative piece and fines related to violations of certain city codes that have been declassified under the action of the new municipal code, curfew this year. City staff, representatives in the City Attorney's Office, and Community Development interviewed eight three half-quality candidates, and it is our recommendation tonight to appoint Teresa Alau as the City's Hearings Officer. The resolution also provides for the appointment of an alternate, Mr. Jerry Dahl. Both of us are here in the audience tonight, if you'd like to speak to them, but we respectfully request that you adopt the resolution as the back.
Mr. McLeod, if you want to say something before, I have a quick motion, okay? Let me just have the two people just come forward and just introduce themselves, just so that they'll recognize your face, and you don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but I think we could pretty much tell who's who, but... I'm Jerry Dahl. Okay. I'm delighted to be here on this as well. Congratulations on being chosen. I think you're creating progress. Any comments, Council, before we go in? Thank you very much, just nice to put a face with a name, man. Thank you very much. I'm now open for a motion, Mr. McLeod, with approved Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six. Ms. Teeter.
Second motion.
I have a motion in a second to approve Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the City Attorney, please read the title.
I've raised Resolution Two Thousand and Ten Dash Forty-Six, Resolution appointing Teresa Alau as administrative hearing officer and Gerald Dahl as alternate administrative hearing officer.
And motion in a second, City Attorney, sort of the title, request a voice, let me introduce. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion passes, congratulations. Welcome to the best city in the country, Mr. Flannery. Okay, the next item on the agenda will be citizen communication. Public comment roster, bring it down along the channel at the entrance to the council chambers. For those who wish to address council, when I call your names, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You're reminded that each speaker is limited to three minutes. City councils, you're reminded they are not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions or express concerns when appropriate. City manager will generally assign the staff members to get the necessary information to solve issues. First person on the list, there's two, good night, and this is Larry Quintana. Good evening, sir, it just seems like we're running in the same circles, you know? If you're there, I'm there.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Barry Quintana, I'm at Seventy-seven Eighty, Mungalia Street, in the unincorporated portion of Adams County. I'm here this evening to extend an invitation to the council to our annual Monaco Neighborhood Improvement Committee Community Barbecue. And we would like to have you all attend, it is tomorrow evening, from five to seven p.m. And this is our seventh annual community barbecue. And as you may remember, I know Monaco Neighborhood is probably has one of the longest existing community organizations here in the Commerce City area. And I think it goes back to sometime in the seventies when the late Jean Cosiom and Jean Martinez put together an organization, and it has evolved, and today it still continues to evolve. The barbecue will be held in conjunction with the Monaco Elementary Back to School Night. And this year, as... And this year, as we have in the past three, the election years, we have invited all the candidates from, that are ready for office in now, Adams County, to also attend, and come meet the neighbors in the Monaco community. We want to extend the thanks to our sponsors this year, which is the Commerce City One Community, as well as the Mountface Toyota, who has provided the funding for us to have this continuous barbecue. I've sent out a email to all of the council members, and it's a little bit late, you have to forgive me for that, but things have been just active these last few weeks, but we'd like to see you there and be a part of our community. Thank you.
Would you just give us the time and date again?
Okay, the time, it's tomorrow evening, August seventeenth, and it is from five to seven PM.
Okay.
And it is at the Ulysses Sentinel Park, which is adjacent to Monaco Elementary School. That's Thirty-Six, Thirty-Five Monaco Street. And, let's see, I think that's pretty much all the information. Do you need to answer?
Okay, Ms. Peter?
Good evening, Mr. Quintana. I unfortunately won't be able to go along with Mr. Bullard. We have a wrap meeting tomorrow at five thirty to eight o'clock. So if the two of us aren't there, we will be there. We are somewhere.
Okay, well, thank you very much. The board, CEO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Next person on the list is Hunter Newsom.
Good evening.
Good evening. You're doing well. Yourself?
Doing fantastic. Good evening, everyone. Mayor, and also council. My name is Hunter Newsom. I reside at One Zero Zero Nine Four, in Commerce City, Cannavale Street. Sorry about that when I got in here. The main reason why I'm here today, in my community, we're really concerned about having a grocery store in the part of northern Commerce City. It's something that's very needed, something very necessary. I've had a chance to talk to Mr. Vincent and also Mr. Bullard about this, and I've had a chance to been, as a matter of fact, it's been a wonderful pleasure to attend some meetings so far. I'm very impressed with the actual functionality of the council, but it would be something that I would like your support on, and see if that could be reality. There are quite a few systems out there that we need to have this store. I have it made aware that it's going to be a Walmart, so I don't know if it's necessary to get that energized, or make that a true reality, but yeah, speaking for everyone that can be up there in northern half, we would like to have that, and that's pretty much what I have to say today. Thank you for listening to us.
Okay, Mr. McNamara.
Thanks so much for coming tonight. Nice to meet you. Just to real quickly let you know, as council sets priorities for the year, our top category was Eagle Creek, and high in that category was business for the street and sale options and organization and everything. Unfortunately, we don't have, we really build a store for the, of course, these staff, but I would like to know that that is an incredible focus, and I would defer to the example of the work being done by Mr. Leonard, his power development staff, to try and further those efforts. So please know that we share the sense of urgency. I live just right there, near you, and so I too am, if you're burned out on the community, go find basic groceries. Thank you. Appreciate this.
Ms. Peter?
Yes, all of us up here extremely, you know, interested in getting a grocery store. We have been working and working and working on it. And Brittany, would you be able to give this gentleman your card, and maybe you could share more information on how we are doing as much as we can? I live up there as well, and I don't like to drive to Brighton or into Denver to another city to get my groceries. Sometimes I drive twenty minutes, twenty-five each way to get some eggs, so I totally understand.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much for coming. My pleasure, Mayor. Nice to put a name with a face. Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. There's only one set of minutes before council this evening. There are the minutes for the meeting, July twenty-six, two thousand and ten. Before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow Councilwoman Teeter to abstain from voting because of her excused absence. Ms. Peter? Or, I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, no problem. A move to excuse Councilwoman Teeter, allow her to abstain from voting because of her excused absence.
Mr. McNamara?
Hi.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to excuse Councilwoman Teeter from voting on the minutes. All those, a voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. I'll now undertake a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Newsom?
Who to approve the minutes for July twenty-six, two thousand and ten?
Ms. Snyder?
Second motion?
I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes, July twenty-six, two thousand and ten. Start a discussion. Seeing none, request a voice vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, there is one public hearing scheduled proceeding. We'll open the public hearing on ordinance eighteen twenty-three. The city manager, adjutant, please invite staff up to review the case.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara, and Councilman McNamara. Mr. McNamara?
Good evening, Mr. Newsom. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Can I hear from you quick, Mr. Kramer? Mr. Kramer's at home with a newborn.
Oh, congratulations, you did.
That's our best surprise of all. Oh, man. That's actually better news than what we've heard so far.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Tim's commence his presentation, I would make, I'd like to make note for the record that there has been some correspondence submitted that should be made part of this proceeding. A letter dated August fourteen, two thousand and ten, from Michael S. Griffin. He made a part of the record of this proceeding. Also, a letter dated August sixteen, two thousand and ten, from the Denver International Airport, Director of Planning, should be made part of the record. Also, we have correspondence from David Foster, on behalf of property owner, which is the subject of this proceeding. Cowling is declined for Mr. Foster, and that should be made a part of the record. Also, all of the planning commission records, proceedings, minutes, all of those are part of the city council on record in this proceeding. So having said those introductory remarks, I would defer them to Mr. Tim to proceed with the presentation.
Okay, very good. A quick background for council. March of this year, city council did adopt the comprehensive plan via public hearing, and in the following month, April fifth, council directed staff to prepare an amendment to update the land use designation for a specific two-hundred-and-fifty-acre parcel along the E four seventy corridor, and that's what we're here to discuss tonight. Again, the overall future land use plan is approved by council, encompasses the entire city. This is just a map representation. We're focused on the two-hundred-and-fifty acres, outlines here in blue. If you remember, council gave the determination of future land use TBD to be determined in that area, within the E four seventy area. Just a refresher, a couple of land use designations to keep in mind. The purple color, again, on the, on the plan there, is the DIA technology. That particular color classification does not allow any residential, but does allow commercial and industrial uses. And then the E four seventy mixed-use classification, that orange and paint hatch, again, shown here in several areas along the E four seventy area, that does allow residential, and, but does not allow any type of industrial. So a couple of options here. First one to the far right is what city council approved, and you'll see the double-wide strip here of the purple color, but this area basically future land use to be determined. The Citizens Advisory Committee, the, the planning commission recommended that, that this other piece go ahead and be DIA technology, so both sides would be DIA technology. The property owners updated request calls out the western piece to be all E four seventy mixed-use, with a hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer along the west side of Piccadilly to be a residential. So on the original CAC analysis of how they got to, again, this purple shading here, number one, the city's vision is to be a balanced community and not just be a better community. There was a lot of discussion and talk about making sure that the city has appropriate amounts of commercial and industrial jobs, revenue-producing areas, in addition to just houses. Number two, the city should strive to achieve an appropriate jobs-to-housing balance. Our current jobs-to-housing balance is about one-point-eight to one, meaning that there's one-point-eight jobs for every one household. And the comprehensive plan is set to go at one-point-five. That's a very good number. Most of the communities in Denver, Horton, Westminster are well below one-point-oh, meaning that they have a lot more residents than they do jobs. Our current number for all the housing up north is over number two. That number is going to go down to about one-point-one-five with all the residential housing up north, so they wanted, really wanted to target that one-point-five throughout the entire city. Number three, the city should set aside adequate and strategic land for future revenue-producing areas. That was a huge consideration, making sure that adequate areas were set aside. The depth of the area, the CAC and the PC work with Angela Economics. If you remember, they were the ones hired to the strategic plan. That distance there, the double-wide distance here, is partly because of that distance of what suitable industries could work in that area. If everyone remembers, the area south of Hundred and Fourth Avenue, between Hundred and Fourth Avenue, and the power lines is six-hundred feet, and that's not wide enough for, for big lots or for grocery, and so some of that distance is a result of that action as well. Number four, the city does not want to add an overabundance of residential, because residential growth is not physically sustainable for the city long-term. The analysis was done throughout, and basically for each residential unit added to the city, it creates a negative fiscal impact, about negative seven-hundred, negative nine-hundred dollars. For each one-thousand feet of commercial, you gain about a hundred dollars; for each one-thousand feet of industrial, you gain three thousand dollars. So there certainly is that, that direct correlation between that non-residential and fiscal stability. Number five, the city already has an excess supply of residential land not yet developed in this area. Again, the CAC and PC examined it. Currently, up in the northern range, there's about eighteen thousand additional lots, either planted or entitled, that have not been built yet, assuming a, a five-hundred per year housing start, that's still about thirty-six or thirty-seven years of housing supply just in the northern part of the city. So there was an opinion expressed that there's already an oversupply, perhaps when the use would be allowed. Number six, the city should protect residential uses from negative DIA impacts, including ground rubble noise. Certainly, the, the overheads, white areas, also the ground rubble, were big considerations, big factors that played into it. The CAC and PC felt that of all the cities in the metro area, Commerce City certainly should know about noise from the old Staples and Airport, and the impacts that will cause from that. They don't want to duplicate that issue again. And number seven, the city will have an opportunity in the future to revisit this area, as more is known about how this quarter will develop, because it is a long-range plan, twenty, thirty years may occur before this area ever develops. A comprehensive plan is updated every five to seven years on average, so the opportunities to revisit this area, as more is understood with the future of DIA, with the future of land uses. Also, it was felt that in general, it's easier to change industrial land to residential than it is from residential land to industrial. And in fact, in early part of the city, Eagle Creek, Turnberry, Aberdeen, River Road, to the Dunes, Bell Creek, those were all as industrial at one time, and are now residential nature. And number eight, the city hopes to protect the non-residential nature of the future Piccadilly roadway. In addition to Tower Road, Piccadilly will be a major north-south road running through the city. It's envisioned through the transportation plan, recently adopted by council. This will be a six-lane roadway, so extremely big, extremely busy, and equivalent to Hundred and Twenty Avenue through Horton, or Sheraton Boulevard, or Colorado down through Blending. So it's important that single family is not appropriate along that type of roadway. So with that in mind, spring of this year, again, the CAC recommends to planning commission city council to approve the two-hundred-and-fifty acres as DIA technology. And then on June first of this year, planning commission did take testimony, held a public hearing, recommended that city council approve the two-hundred-and-fifty acres as DIA technology, five to zero. A couple of alternatives tonight for council. Number one, they can make no changes to the comprehensive plan, leaving it to be determined TBD, and deferring categorization of the property until a specific proposal will come to the board council. Number two, they could change the strip to DIA technology, in accordance with the recommendation from the CAC and planning commission. Number three, city council could change the strip to E four seventy mixed-use, as an aspect of the property under representation. And number four, city council could change the strip to another type of classification or combination of classifications, kind of in that form. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Mr. Gielo already referenced the two letters that were received over the weekend and today, so with that, we'll open up. Questions from council? Mr. Bullard?
Mr. Gielo, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to bring forth this, but in a prior conversation, when asked to postpone this meeting from its prior time to tonight, we were instructed by the lawyer for the client who owns the land, that upon the postponement, and I spoke with him also, that his client would come forth tonight and recommend that we bring forth that to be determined, to be dropped, and we take the recommendations, recommendations of the planning commission, and that the comprehensive plan would go through this, it was written. Do you remember that conversation?
Yes, I do. The conversation arose because I believe Mr. Foster originally called you, and then you referred Mr. Foster to me, and then David Foster and I had a conversation of that nature.
So from the results of that conversation, is it okay now to make a motion to apply the recommendations of the planning commission, and to bring forth this as, as the comprehensive plan is noted, as it came out of the planning commission, with the due to be determined drops, and the comprehensive plan held hold as it was?
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Due notice has been given for the hearing this evening, so what the council was obligated to do is to hear any relevant evidence regarding the application that's been filed with the, with the city. The application being prepared by the city staff, which requests an amendment to the common plan from, to be determined to DIA technology. That's what's before the council. But it is a public hearing, so it's required by the council to go through the, the evidence, based upon the evidence you hear then, to make your decision. It is true that I previously advised the council, that I thought that the matter had been resolved, but as it turned out, the matter has not been resolved, and it is required as a due process proceeding that you do continue with the, the process here, and here are the evidence that's going to be presented, and then after the public hearing is closed, then you can vote on, on the issue. You'll have planning commission recommendations to determine whether or not you approve or disapprove those, and then after that, if those recommendations are passed, you'll have the ordinance to consider, which would amend the common plan.
Right now, this particular meeting, what should be taking place, is comments from council, to staff, questions, whatever, rather than any of this other, anyway, ahead of yourself, is reluctant to hear?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tim. My question to you, I guess you didn't understand from the first hearing, but when the property owner purchased the land, the land was under the old common plan, right? Were there any zoning restrictions on that when he purchased the land? Can you explain this to me? I'm a lot confused. I, I don't know if mixed use was in there, or how, how that particular part of the common plan.
When the, when the money changes, when the property owner purchased the property, it wasn't under the previous New Land Comprehensive Plan, that had that larger red area, the entire area. That red area was significantly different than what you see here, is much more That red area was significantly different than what you see here, is much more refined. It did allow residential only at a high level, only at foster family, eight-vonions acre, but it did allow commercial, and it did allow industrial near the airport as well. So, there were some similarities, some differences.
What type of...
That's correct. Eight-vonions acre. This is proposing for. Mr. Mayor?
I thank you for helping us with this meeting. So, when the property was purchased, they were in complete compliance with the current comp plan, is that correct?
In what capacity?
Just as far as, you know, I mean, they were, when they purchased the property, they were under the... They did not know that it would be updating the comp plan, so at the time, they were fine with what the comp plan looked like at that time.
That is my thing.
So, at this current moment, if I understand correctly, we have this plan designated as TBD, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so, they're wishing for a change to something else now, or I think we're all just a little bit confused as to what happened with that last one, because it was pretty confusing. So, is my understanding that our choices are to change it from TBD to going to do back to the comp plan as it was presented to us? Is that pretty much our choices?
That's correct. So, everything is agreed on between the city, and the CAC, and the PC, and the property owner, with the exception of the 250 acres.
Right, I understand that.
And so, the options are, you can either keep it as it is, to determine, and then reevaluate in the future. Or go with the CAC planning commission recommendation, which would basically turn it to DIA technology, which is allowed to be commercial, industrial, with no residential. Or the property owner saying, let's have it be the E470 mixed-use, which is allowed to be residential, with the exception of the 150-foot strip along Piccadilly, without any residential.
So, the property owner...
Three options.
Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. So, the property owner is actually wanting to change it to something different now entirely, and we're going to be hearing from them this evening?
That's right. The property owner, my understanding is, prefers the middle option there on that page.
So, we'll be hearing from them this evening, right? Okay, thanks.
Mr. McCallum?
In terms of the original comprehensive plan that we are discussing, I'm assuming it's the 1985 draft of the comprehensive plan? Not the one that we currently have adopted, but the one we've shared, was based on 1985, correct?
1993, correct.
1993, okay, thank you.
Mr. Carson?
Can you tell me when this property was first...
I didn't have the information, I'm sorry.
Do you know what the zoning was at that time?
I believe, and this would be a question of the afternoon, I believe it's agricultural and general.
Okay, and I'm sure that I'm correct, but please tell me that I am. Just because you purchased property, then zoned it a specific way, if you do not develop it at that time, zoning can't be changed, no matter where you're at, is that correct?
Yes, zoning can't be changed, but this is also the land use, and not zoning designation. So, land use is a general policy for how the land should develop in the parking lot.
And so, many cities are updating their comprehensive plans, correct?
Cities update their comprehensive plans all the time.
And so, I'm assuming that this probably happens to a fair amount of people who purchase property and have not developed it?
You know, it really depends. Some areas are, you know, stable, there's, or in Denver, there's a change, right? So, it really depends on the specific circumstances and how things evolve, and unit factors occurring within properties or we designate for land uses.
Well, and prior to that, we have already seen, speaking of the airport and the ground rumble, I do believe that that is something that we need to look into the future, and really, I mean, the experts are telling us about this ground rumble. And I think we need to take a little attention.
We need someone from the airport here to be able to answer this on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, it was about, what, two years ago that we appointed the citizens advisory committee?
That's right.
And during that two years, there's been input, I guess, from a lot of different sources, including these landowners.
That's right.
Right, and this has been through that process, it's been through now the planning commission twice. And so, our citizens are recommending a certain avenue for land use. Our planning commission has gone along with that twice. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
I have one more thing. I have unrelated, but related to this item. I know that all the ground rumble and sound contours and all of that stuff is very important. I was one of the proponents to get this fixed, so that we didn't have to go down the state of Manhattan. The challenge is, and I don't know if you have this answer, but it might be something you want to research, that Denver actually has a development building called High Point, which will have residential, and is actually within the sound contours of the airport. My concern, if this is true, my concern is, is it something that we don't know? It seems like this is going to be okay for the city and county of Denver. Is there a reason that it's not marked, it's not even in the sound contours? And again, maybe I don't have the answer to this, it may be something you need to research, but I'm a little concerned when I see different sides doing different things.
I'm not aware of that issue, but I'm concerned we have the airport, but we're already asking about this side. And Mr. Benson?
Yes, and yeah, things do change in the future, or things that we assume to be correct today turn out not to be correct, or people have different needs in the future, they want to develop in a different manner. Anybody's got the ability to come to this council and to try to get that changed at that time, whether that be five years, or 10 years out, or whatever, is that correct?
Anybody, maybe, a stretch. It'd be planning commission, or the city council, or the staff, or the property. But one of those four.
But it can be changed upon application. It can be requested, considered, developed. And it's actually done by the council and planning commission, but...
That's right. Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council?
I know, we go in narrowly, what we do now is ask if there's anybody in the audience, but would we have the applicant come in first, or is it just him?
Generally, at this point, you would, in order to keep the flow going, you would have a presentation from people that are in favor of the application.
Okay.
And then, after they present what they have to say, then you have people opposed to the application.
Okay.
So, I would imagine that the person who is in favor of it would be the applicant. Would the applicant or not?
No. Just a clarification there, the city's actually the applicant.
Oh, okay. Works for me. So, who does that mean, council forward?
Witnesses that want to support the application then would be allowing...
What are they supporting on? They gave us four options.
They're supporting the application to make it DIA technology.
Okay, so I need whoever's going to come forward that also wants to do that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Remember, as you come forward, please state your name and address for the record. Steve?
Good evening, Councilwoman Lewis, my name is Chris B. Douglas. I reside at 10970 Unity Parkway, Commerce City, Comma, 80022. I am proud to say that I was asked to be a member of the citizens advisory committee, and set aside a lot of my personal time to be a part of that, and wanted to be involved because I want to see the city move ahead in the right direction. We thought long and hard about this section of the city, and we don't want to see a repeat of Stapleton. We felt that that was the best use of this portion of land in the city. We want to have a bright future here, and we don't want residential where it shouldn't be, especially so close to, I think it could possibly be a potential runway, is that what I'm understanding? And we are looking to the future here, and like I said, we thought long and hard about it. We did have the landowners and the developers having the opportunity to come and give voice of their opinions on what they thought they would like to see, but at the end of the day, that's what we came up with. And Denver should have more from Stapleton. Commerce City should have taken that into consideration. And so, that's, I guess, my opinion this evening, and thank you so much. But do know that we did take our positions very seriously, and we took a lot of things into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who's on the paper? I guess I messed this up, I called the wrong people. Mr. Gielo, over.
Good evening, Councilor, Steve Douglas, Commerce City, 10970 Unity Parkway. I just want to say that you had mentioned I Point, well, that's in Denver, and that's a development that's already planned and going in, and Denver has position cells, and land use-wise, a great position, take advantage of the airport, as well as Commerce City should in the future. Now, the CAC recommendation, that I was a citizen, almost on board there, recommendation is the reason why I feel residential there, because it's 2,000 feet from the runway, which is going to be probably 10 to 15 years from now. And I would like to know from the landowner, when did they purchase the land? That would be nice to know, that question was asked, and there was no answer, so when did you?
We'll have to...
Okay, would that be nice to know, because coming up here, and for the council here, it'd be nice to have the knowledge to know if they bought this land back in the 90s or purchased within the last five years, because comprehensive plans do change based on demographics and what's best use for the city in the near future. So, with that in mind, I think DIA technology would be great to have on the resume as far as bringing in businesses for the future.
There's someone else who would like to come forward? Good evening, sir.
I'm Rick Bush, Director of Planning for Denver International Airport. Good evening, sir. I'd like to address the High Point question, if I may.
I wish you would, thank you.
The High Point location is ultimately a pickup from this, opposite the runway, the future of this plan, there's more than the distance between the corporate, we're discussing here. The residential area where we've had the discussions is actually at the end of the runway, and has, is an overfly issue.
See, if you look at the exhibits in the... I Point is located north of the top of the exhibits as a comparison to the DIA technology that we're talking about. It is a direct, this is a direct overfly, we have some concerns with the residential areas. Upbeat the runway, further to the south of the airport, which would be immediately west, which corresponds to this area, is all industrial, commercial, as part of High Point. So, and that's the same area that would be subject to ground rumble. So, yes, there is, the High Point, there are some issues with the DIA contour there, that there is a negotiated line that we actually had, that we worked out as part of the High Point agreement, but as far as the ground rumble of this area being the runway, there is no precedent there.
Thank you for that, because that was the information I got in the future, I brought it out at the meeting, because I love it.
And long here, I do want to reiterate our continued support of the staff and the planning commission and citizens advisory council on the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak on this topic, on this particular side? Seeing no one, we will now go to the opposing side. Someone would like to come forward? Good evening, sir.
David Foster, on behalf of the Cali Company, 6217th Street. I'm here to navigate with Mitch Black from Moore's Design, and I would like more with Cali companies. I want to first address very directly the issue that was raised by Councilman Bullard. He sent a letter on July 7th to this council and to the mayor, asking for continuance for five weeks. And I stated specifically, I think it's worth me reading this based on what Councilman Bullard just referenced, said this request is made in good faith, as we hope that by August 16th, we will have no objection to reclassification of the property. Our hope is primed despite the fact that Cali recently submitted an application to the annexation and zoning of continuous property in the 250 acres in question. In comprehensively planned for the Cali properties, we anticipate that there may be no need to further consider the prospect of residential uses in the 250 acre parcel. This five-week continuance will enable our planning experts and the city's planning experts to come up with a global solution to the current five-wafer. Of course, if we are unable to reach a comprehensive plan solution, the amendment will be considered in the public hearing, not on August 16th. So, you know, I think that that's pretty clear what we are hoping to accomplish. But given that you've known me for plenty of years, I really don't want to be up here tonight having a comprehensive debate over a 250-acre comprehensive plan issue. I just don't. I don't think it's the right venue, I don't think it's the right place. I feel like when I was here back in March, many of you felt kind of shell-shocked by my presentation. I know folks on the CAC and the planning commission felt that way. I have spoken to some of them, I apologized, that was not my intention. Again, I'm not a believer in trying to zone property by, or comprehensively plan property by, that's not my strategy. As I can reference in my conversation with you five, six months ago, there was a period of time, four months, where one of the members from the Cali properties was no longer employed by Cali. He was the only person receiving correspondence from the city as it relates to the timing of the comprehensive plan. When he left Cali, we were still on version 1.2. Version 1.2 was something we were completely okay with. Version 1.3 came up after he was gone, and we didn't have enough time to fully vet it. And while we tried to meet, and we did meet with city staff, and had some conversations, we had moved around some of the school sites, and we had worked out some of that, we just couldn't pre-arrange some showness. And so, again, I just want to, I want to say, because I think it's very important, that I don't think that tonight is the place to be having this particular debate. I'm sorry, Lord. If that being the case, here we are. And so, let me make a couple of things also really clear. We're okay with the city continuing to use the TBD in a comprehensive plan. That's okay for us. It's okay for a couple of reasons. One is, you already voted on that, you already adopted it that way. Second reason that we're okay with that is, you're right, I mean, things are going to change over time, and when they do change, it will require, whosoever the owner of that property, likely Cali, to come back in and get an amendment to the comprehensive plan before they zone the property. Comprehensive planning is not zoning. And, you know, Councilwoman Carson, you're 100% correct. When the property was purchased in 2005, it was in the county. It still is in the county. It's zone agriculture in the county. But when you purchase a property, what you do is you look to the municipality that is the most likely municipality to annex the property. You look to their comprehensive plan, you kind of get a gauge. It's not a guarantee. There's never a guarantee. I will tell you, there's never a guarantee, even if you're a homeowner in a city, there's no guarantee that the city council, sub-9... There's no guarantee that the city council, sub-night, isn't going to re-source your property. Look at what happened in Denver two months ago, where they re-zoned the entire city. It happens. So, the city council has that power. And when I counsel my clients, I let them know that city councils can do whatever they want. When you go through a comprehensive planning process, and you did this well, and the CAC, to their credit, did it extraordinarily well, and the planning commission did it well, they took into consideration, you know, the multitude of issues and ideas and tried as best they could to present the result. And it's amazing to me that you had an entire city just recently comprehensively planned, and the only controversy after everything said and done is over 250 acres. I mean, obviously, they did a fantastic job. The issue about the 250 acres is something that is a little bit more complicated. And I wish that we had been a part of more of the conversation. And look, I'll take responsibility for it. I'll take responsibility, but that doesn't mean that it's just okay to move forward. What we did in the updated request was we looked at your adopted comprehensive plan. And we tried to make some modifications to the TBD. We tried to finesse it a little bit more. We tried to reflect what you've adopted. There are two things that were critical to our redesign. The first is, you have a land use goal, 6.2, is buffer residential development for the DIA. And it says, "New residential development should not occur within three quarters of a mile of any existing or planned runway." Well, part of the 250 was within three quarters of a mile. So, what we did was, instead of saying, "Okay, the entire 250 acres now has to be non-residential", we said, "How do we get to the three quarters of a mile?" And so, that's where we created the Piccadilly realignment and created a non-residential buffer on the west side of Piccadilly. There will be no residential within three quarters of a mile because it's part of the comprehensive plan. There's another reference that the airport used in their letter of today, that is, "L use 6C, housing compatible building near the airport. Avoid placing residential in noise and heightened areas near the airport and within the ground rubble area within 2003 from the DIA property line." We're beyond that. We've now extended it from beyond 2000 feet, we're now three quarters of a mile. And so, we met very specifically the requirements of the comprehensive plan. You know, the, you know, DIA was obviously a part of the comprehensive plan, they were on the advisory committee, they signed on to all of these policies. And so, I think that what you have in the updated request meets not just the spirit, but the intent of your comprehensive plan. So, that's why we did that. Now, again, I don't think that tonight is really the place for us to debate the relevance or the importance or the significance of the updated request. I mean that in all due. I think that if there is an inkling amongst some of you to kind of think through and finesse that particular updated request more, we're glad, I know that the CAC is mostly disbanded. I'd love to have a chance to discuss it with the CAC. I'd love to have a chance to go back to the planning commission and then to come back here. Those are the appropriate places for that particular dialogue. I know lots made of rumble noise. I review the studies that are in your packet on rumble noise. We get it. There's also a whole section on mitigating rumble noise. We're willing to sign on to mitigation of rumble noise. See, those are the things that we're happy to integrate into this plan. And so, I understand that, you know, this has been a long, long process, but we are now more than 2003, we're more than three quarters of a mile. We're not in a noise contour, which is, by the way, that is different than the High Point example. A High Point has residential zone property in the noise contour between 16 and 65. Show you on the map if you're interested in seeing it. They had a very contentious debate at city council over that particular issue. They might have had a ground rumble issue, but they are in a noise contour issue. We're not. It's not our, it's not open here. The, you know, I don't have much else to say other than the one, the two slides that Steve had identified in terms of the CAC analysis, the eight criteria, are meant candidly whether the property is comprehensively planned, misused, or DIA technology. Each of those criteria is actually that. I think that our issue tonight, really, how close does anybody on the city council want, you know, residential to be to the airport? And that's why we put this updated request together, because it met three quarters of a mile. Think I've answered the questions that were asked? Happy to answer any other questions?
The only one I think that was asked that I didn't hear answered was, "When did they purchase that thing?"
Oh, she hasn't been thought.
Okay, then I just missed it, I'm sorry. Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Foster, thanks for being here. Okay, so you are comfortable with leaving it at only TBD?
Of course, it's a pleasure TBD, yes.
And I can, you know, first of all, I'd like to say that, you know, the staff, you know, and the CAC, you know, did a wonderful job. And I love everyone with all that and the time they spent working on that project. It's admirable. I know everybody's extremely busy. And so, many times citizens take their time out to serve on committee. I am totally 100% appreciative of their efforts. And the reason why I was, I did not feel comfortable with leaving it at TBD, and I don't have a problem with leaving it at TBD because we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen in 10 years, 15 years, whenever Cali decides to develop this property. We don't know if there's really going to be a runway there or not. We don't know if he's going to even walk residential. It could be a warehouse, it could be, it could be, it could be an office building, it could be the technology, it could be anything. I mean, right now, we really don't have any idea from what I've understood at this point. Cali company hasn't made any decisions on what they're going to do with it. So, you know, there's a lot of factors that could come into play. And if we leave it at TBD, you know, 10, 15, 20, however many years out, whenever the decision is made finally by Cali, by what they want, to actually do with that property, they're going to have to come through the process from beginning to end. And let the council, let's see that that time to give all the information, that's current information, not just, you know, it could be this, it could be that. You know, all the information will be there at that time for them to make the most educated decision at that time. So, I am not comfortable with leaving it at TBD because I know that when the decision does come down the line, however many years down the line, the council that's sitting at that point will have the information to make an educated decision. Thanks.
Ms. Mayor.
Yes, good evening. The type of residential you have proposed, is that multiple?
We don't have anything else. We have, we don't have...
Well, in the misused part, would it be like townhouses, single residential? You don't have any plans, all right?
Again, council, I mean, I think that that particular area is developed 20 years from now.
Right.
I don't know. It seems to me, I mean, if Mitch were to put a land plan together today, I think he'd probably identify that as higher than a residential. Maybe multifamily apartments, probably not single family detached, that probably goes towards the middle of the development. But that would be today's development. I mean, I don't know what 20 years looks like.
What was your conclusion?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Bullock.
So, you know that, Mr. Foster, in your conversation with me on the phone, you directly came forth and said, "This has nothing to do with the Third Creek property. This is not tied to the Third Creek property. This is a conversation that I had with you." And I said, "I cannot just have this conversation with you. I want you to tell Bob Gable the same thing you just told me." Your conversation said, "If we were to give you this continuation," this is the conversation that was brought to me, "you would drop your objection to the B determination and let the planning commission, comprehensive plan go through as it came out of the planning commission." That was our conversation. That was a conversation you had with Bob Gable. Now, I can understand you going back to a letter that I don't have, because I'm going back to all my emails to look for. But we're talking about a specific conversation that you had with myself. I then referred you to our city attorney. You had the same conversation with the city attorney. It wasn't tied to Third Creek, it wasn't tied to anything along E470. You said you wanted a continuation for this purpose and you would drop your objection. I came forth and got the continuation and you're here now with the same objection. Now, and the way it works is, if you say something, you usually follow it through. Now, if you didn't intend to, but I mean, I'm not going to feed you my memory. I'm going to let you, Bob Gable, speak to this also because he did call you right after I talked to you and you had the same conversation with him. Am I not correct?
Mr. Bullock, you're asking me if I think I'm a liar?
No, I never mentioned that. All I'm asking you to do is say, if your memory serves you as well as mine does.
My memory serves me exactly as the letter that I wrote. I mean, that's exactly how I reflected it.
Okay, we're not talking about the letter, we're talking about the conversation. Was the conversation in the letter the same then, or was it different, far apart?
Well, when I came to the council that evening and requested the continuance, I was under the impression that there would not be a dispute on this issue pending the other application that was being filed on the 150 adjacent properties. And David indicated that he thought that the 150 acre issue would be more crystallized before this evening's meeting. So, I told the council that I felt that this evening's meeting would not be controversial. I think, and as I recall, Mr. Benson, Councilman Benson, was not even in favor of continuing the matter that night. And I prevailed upon to favor continuing it because I thought that it would not be this kind of a dispute this evening. So, but all those issues aside, I think that we ought to read it to the merits of the case, what we're talking about. And those issues really are somewhat periphery to the main issue as to whether or not this should be granted or not. It may weigh upon your decisions to how you vote, but it's not really the central issue that you must decide this evening, whether or not Mr. Foster told Mr. Councilman Bullock or me certain things that Mr. Bullock and I thought we heard and represent to the council that evening. But the main issue is, how to vote on the issue that's been presented and on the evidence that you have before you on the amendment to the comp plan.
Well, I understand that and I wholeheartedly agree with that sort of issues that had tonight. But the night of the continuation, if we hadn't continued that meeting, Mr. Foster wasn't even in the room that night. I mean, a word was given and Mr. Foster took it, took us at our word, that he didn't even bother to show up to see if it would be continued. If it hadn't been continued, this meeting tonight probably wouldn't be taking place. Am I not correct?
That's true, you would have gone ahead and had to hear it.
Okay, and so, I mean, I'm just relying on what, if I put out my word, it scans there. And that's the only thing you have to rely and stand on. It was given to me, it was given to you. Now, I know what the, I know what's happening now, that we've come back and something has not gone right. And so, we are looking at this for, to have the property updated with, to have mixed use within that boundary. But that was not what was fought for in the conversation. And my whole determination on this whole issue is what we spoke about. So, you're right, this is not, this is not the place to have this discussion. What we should be doing now is voting on what we are moving forth with. And I agree with you wholeheartedly that if, in a perfect world, we wouldn't even be looking at this because we're talking about something 20 years down the road. But this is not a perfect world and this is not a perfect council. But we can only do the best we can with the information we receive.
Okay, just so I understand, as I'm here, two completely different stories. Here, Mr. Bullock say that there was nothing continued on anything. But what I heard from Mr. Gaylor was, "If this happened, this would happen," which are two 180 degrees in opposite direction.
Well, if we're going to pursue that line of questioning...
Yes.
And I guess we are. I was led to believe that, and I made it clear, that one case was not contingent upon the other case. Each case stood on its own merit. So, and I told David, Mr. Foster, that he had to understand that this continuance is granted. It wasn't granted because there was some expectation in the other case, because the two cases are totally unrelated. Now, having said that, I don't know if I've answered your question, but my representation to the council was based upon my understanding. And that's what I said that night, that I didn't think there would be a dispute if you continued the matter. So, having said that, this whole discussion has to do with credibility of what is being presented to the council. But I think we're missing the real focus where it should be. And that is to get back to what the vote should be on this application there.
My other small concern is, this is a conversation that went between Mr. Foster, Mr. Bullock, and the rest of this council was not able to listen to, which is the same challenge that we have with other people on this council. And so, I have a real challenge saying, "Okay, I'm going to take his word or his word, that what they said is true or not true."
To clarify that, Mr. Mayor, whether or not it's, you believe Mr. Bullock or Mr. Foster is still not the issue. And even so, whether Mr. Foster said that or didn't say it, the issue tonight is, what do you think should happen to this comp plan?
Okay, okay, Ms. Carson.
Well, you know, less than a year that I've conceded here is one thing that I have learned from people on this council, other councils, it's most important, any council can do, you'd be a visionary. And that's not to be for tomorrow or next year, it's 25, 50 years down the road. I don't know how that happens, I think we're all trying our best. So, this city put together an advisory council and asked them to do the same thing. And it comprised many people in this city, they sat on that and they sat on it for a long, long time. And then they presented that to this council. It was supported by the planning commission, evidently it was supported by the airport, lots of experts out there. We, I did a great service to the people who sat on that advisory committee when I was in this town. And I have felt that after that, because they were given a task to do, they're not just to be a visionary. At that point, prior to being through the Dallas council, I don't think I had thought about this city 25, 50 years down the road. I live in a neighborhood that we're thinking about grocery stores, our dinners, up to the front end. So, I mean, people have, but that kind of time and effort is there. And that you used the word ambush, I didn't want to repeat what you said, feel that they were ambushed. We have moved the city. And I think the residents and citizens who dedicated themselves so wholeheartedly to this project, frankly, saying, "This is our city." And it's not against business, but why is it a place that we all have lived? I spent, have taken time and gone out there to the airport, spent some time to see what it's all, it's beautiful, but... But, and there's a lot to learn about brown rubble. And none of us know about brown rubble, and they're giving things that have been presented to us as citizens throughout history. Even if they're more and more in this could turn into something very bad, receiving caution. I don't think we always do receive caution. And then we have a problem with that tracking. So, like I said, the way I voted that night, I thought, was the best. I personally thought at that time, I was doing the best that I could. I don't think too often in our life do we ever get a chance as quickly as this to right what we felt was wrong that we had done. I felt that my vote that meant was wrong, and I would be very happy now to be given a chance to vote again. And it's nothing against Mr. Foster, it's nothing against your client. It is, I see it as a vote for this city and it's a force that was created so hard for this city.
Ms. Keener.
Yes, the three criteria is that you're in compliance with, and one was three quarter, I'm going to take those. Can you re-read those to me, please?
Well, you have LU 6.2, which is upper residential development for DIA.
Okay.
Do you want me to read the paragraph?
No.
Or do you disagree with the section?
No.
And then LU 6C, housing compatibility near the airport.
Okay.
So those are the two sections from your comprehensive plan that are immediately on point as relates to the property immediately adjacent to the airport.
And this is for the new comp plan?
This is the comp plan you would have.
And then what was the three-quarter mile that you had extended or further?
That was, that's consistent with LU 6.2.
Okay. And was this it? The citizens advisory committee, were they aware, I think that's a bit awareness, I guess if they helped develop?
Oh, councilman, again, in their defense.
Right.
A portion of the 250 acres that is subject, you know, tonight, was within three-quarters of the line. And so, going back and reviewing the comprehensive plan, that's where we came up with the strategy.
Okay, that's what I've been thinking.
Putting in additional non-residential buffer. Again, we're trying to respect what has been adopted.
Right.
And, and that's how we got to that revised plan. And, you know, whether it's 150 or whether it's 200, you know, I mean, we can have that debate. Again, I don't think this is the place for that debate, which is why I suggested we have that debate somewhere else. But that's, that's how we came up with our update.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Ms. Keener, come up here. I feel good, but I'm usually quiet tonight. Just heard a take in, the feedback from council, the statements from, from DIA. And really trying to look at this in context, you know. Counselperson Carson has reminded me that we have rushed to judgment a number of times this year. And certainly, that could be our thing. What I find interesting is, I think, reflect out of the discussion tonight, or reflect back on the discussion right at this point, is that here we have a piece of property, a large piece of property, that nothing's going to happen, no bulldozer will roll for 20 or so years. Yet, we're having this discussion with a tenor that would suggest we are ready to make a final zoning decision on this property. And that, to me, is of concern. Because what it's done is it has injected a certain tone to this discussion that, in my mind, is shutting off our ability to reflect on new information and weigh that information prior to making a final determination. And again, a determination that will not set a final zoning on the property, but will provide a guide, a starting point for future discussion of the property. In other words, we jump to a point 20 years from now, or 15 years from now, or 10 years from now. You know, this starts and plans a line of development in an area. And it's from that point, based on the guidance that we have, that the discussions we came on, what we agree to be possible viable uses of that property. We're not, you guys spell it out in black and white today. We're putting, you know, I look at this as coloring in crayons versus coloring in fine grained detail. We're talking about crayon drawings right now. Very, very high level. 50,000-foot guidelines on what should happen. Now that said, I think, and this was an interesting operation, I hadn't thought of it in my context, that here we are with this phenomenal rewrite to a comp plan. And for a council and a community to get so wrapped around gas or the little stuff, we have one thing, an entire option that is I reflect on, is about this issue. I think that's a testament to the makeup of the CAC and the long hours spent chewing through a ton of information. The community meetings that they participated in. And for us to allow this discussion to sow such angst into our CAC and our council and our staff and a community partner is a very concern. So that said, I, yeah. I find it interesting that we voted nine to nothing to designate this property as TBD. Because based on what was extensive and robust discussion that night, I mean. We had the very same concern that our CAC had, and that our planning commission had. But we came to a different point, in that everyone's trying to look at this point in the air mark and identify how best to align things so that we do right for our community. I think we added another facet to that reflection to say, how do we best enable our community partners to be as successful as possible in their future development of that area? And we could have come up with a good, fine-grained solution to define that area, because it's not appropriate yet to define that in those terms. And so, while the TBD designation could be received as a disrespectful gesture of the CAC, I don't see it as much. But that said, I am intrigued by Mr. Foster's suggestion that the real discussion about the ultimate designation of the comp plan occurred by re-engaging CAC. Because it's very clear to me that that level of discussion didn't have an opportunity to occur. And I understand the argument that there was an 18-month interval, but I also think that there is a viable consideration that there was a change in players. So we, my point is, there is no gun to our head to force this decision to say, let's eradicate this TV. It's in place. It's there. We voted on it. Yes, all nine of us said yes. So, you can't, water spill, can't have you vote back in the picture. It is as it is. What we do have an opportunity to do is to step back and allow for a constructive, professional discussion to occur between Mr. Foster and his client and the members of the CAC. I don't want to rush to judgment and later, when we resume to write the judgment, reflect back that, hey, we could have taken another act. Is there a middle act? It's not a lack of logic. This is not a, would either be there. You know, it's up to us to correctly figure out what those options are. Not like you guys, it doesn't work for our council. That said, I, I really am intrigued by this idea that we ask the CAC if they're willing to sit back down and reflect on this designation. On paper, in black and white, yes, I hear where this plan needs each of those points, hard to argue. At the same time, is it, is it perfect? Maybe not. I, I do have very concern, we're trying to preserve the job of housing now. But at the same time, I also want to be realistic about what sort of ratio is truly realistic for us to expect. And I am all for establishing a threshold, because the higher you shoot, the greater you go from the end. But at the same time, I know what our vision would be unreasonable for. And, so that said, what should we expect in that area? If we, if we sort of crank the filter on this discussion a little bit and say, okay, 1.5 is great for the city one average, what should it be if we narrow our focus into this area? That's needed to discussion, and I would like to see the CAC re-engaging with Mr. Foster and his client and ultimately come back with it. There's no rush to change the TBD designation. We gain nothing, other than we rush to the decision. So, in the one instance where we have the option to actually take some time to talk this through, and take this through, and reflect on it, I hear there's desire to rush to the vote. So, I've obviously talked a lot after I'm talking a lot.
Mr. Bullock.
I just wanted to clear up a point. In any conversation you have with anybody, if you refer that person to the authorized authority within the city, then that conversation is no longer between me and that person. In referring the person to Bob Gayler, our city attorney, I did exactly what I'm supposed to do when you have a conversation with anyone that comes to you, whether it's with, if it was economic development, referring them to Brittany Morris. If it was a city matter, referring them to the city manager. So, a lot of us start conversations with a lot of people, and it isn't a bad thing. And you yourself, the mayor, has done this on numerous occasions, and probably referred to people to the right person who are on the staff. So, this isn't something that was done, and it wasn't something that was done wrong. I did exactly as a councilman's supposed to do on this city council. When you have a conversation with anyone, you take the conversation to the next level and let them talk to the person that's in authority. Thank you.
Mr. Benson.
That's why I agree with a lot of what Mr. McAlly said. I don't think that anybody's looking for this as a final determination on what the land use is going to be on this property. You want to talk about rushing to judgment, I think that's what we did back in March. And I thought that we greatly disrespected these people that we appointed to the citizens advisory committee. And the only guess was they had a year and a half, they knew more about this than we did. I think, probably subject to planning commission, they had a year and a half to study this in quid pro quo. And I thought, after that was over, I felt very badly that we had not listened to our own people. We appointed these people to go out and do a job. They did a job. I think they did an excellent job. Anything that's decided tonight can be changed in the future. This is not a case where a water spill can be put back in the picture. That's what we can do tonight. We can put the water back in the picture tonight. Because those are our, those are the rules under which we operate. I think, Mr. Bullock, back in March, he was voted against, that's what he voted for, so he could raise it in the next meeting, which he did. And that's why we're here tonight, because Mr. Bullock had foresight. The vote for it, if we were to go against it, it's the least acceptable to raise that issue in the future. And if I guess one thing I don't understand, is another personal attack here against Mr. Bullock for having a conversation with somebody that he refers to the city attorney. What are you supposed to do, besides do that? Mr. Mayor, what is he supposed to do? You're the one that's accused him of some wrongdoing here.
Hey, that wasn't at all what I said.
No, it is. Obviously, that's what you said.
This is not.
You're him, or this is not, you know, and that is that you're accusing him of some illegal.
This, now what you're doing to me is a personal attack, which is disgusting.
And I'm not just asking you to explain that. This, what do you think he should have done?
This is, that is not a discussion for now.
Why did you bring that up?
The challenge was, we were being asked to listen to what was being said for Mr. Bullock, though none of us were part of that conversation. All I said was, that was a conversation between the two of them, not between us and council. And we were being instructed to take that information as fact. That's all I said.
You're going to take it as an evidentiary presentation, which is what we're here for tonight in this voice.
I think you deserve that would be hearsay, because none of us were there.
Hearsay is an exception, as you say. My friend, Mr. Gayler, we're not, we're not.
I think we're just getting weight passed, Mr. Gayler.
Getting weight passed, or. Well, you're raising issues that are completely incorrect. They're not in accordance with the law. Hey, go ahead.
Let me just say two things. One is, in an administrative hearing, hearsay evidence is admissible. These letters are hearsay. They're admissible. And I would strongly suggest that, when the city council member has an issue, inquire of the answer to me as city attorney.
That's correct.
So I can't disagree with that. And I think that when the matter was referred to me and I submitted to the city council, I fulfilled my responsibility by telling the city council, when you continue the matter, what I understood the situation to be. So let's move off that subject.
Mr. Benson.
Thank you. I know we all speak with pure hearts. We all want to do the best, best possible we can do. I do really appreciate the CAC for all their work, and I want to understand that your, your recommendations have been taken hard. And again, I don't know if you have had the information that we just heard. I've never heard it presented before, as far as being the criteria, or your own land use development. And I really think, Mr. McAlly, he was, for once, right spot on. It doesn't happen very often, but he was right there for all. But, you know, I, you know, we don't understand a lot of stuff, we do. And we have to be really honest with you. And I, I don't know like you, but I can't see 20 years down the road. I, I don't know, but I suspect that Mr. Cal has got millions and millions of dollars invested in this property. And he's, he's spent a lot of money putting those trees together. And you know, he's putting those trees together for us. I used to, I used to be a young man working with Southwest Development when I first come on council. And we're, we met at the golf course for almost one day, and I said, you know, you've done some amazing things up here. And he says, what makes me most proud is when we make a community that will last. And I really believe that developers aren't getting this just to turn the buck. I really think they somehow, in this twisted way, they really get involved in the community, make care of them. The community is of their benefit. And I just, I don't understand, we're talking about an issue that's probably, you know, 20 years down the road. Has it, it's going to happen more, and I think, Mr. McAlly, I appreciate you bringing that up. I think there's a lot of egos maybe involved here, and I think we should just take a step back. I really, I really believe that what we did in March was the right thing. And I'm sorry if we offended anybody in the CAC. That was not, not ever what we do. But I want you to understand, we're making these decisions for all of Commerce City. And for all of Commerce City that's going to be here in 20 years. And it was interesting to see the growth from the last census to this census. 28,000 in 10 years. We're, according to their estimates right now, we're 40,000 people. We're going to be 20 years. And I look at the maps that we have here and I'm wondering how relevant them are even going to be in 20 years. There's going to be a lot of changing. And things we've seen in the last five years, that ideas that were presented even a couple of years ago, aren't working. And we're seeing houses and commercial areas that we already looked at, so this is how we should be doing it. We're, we're reading. We're reading these things because times, my friends, have changed. And we're going to see rapid, rapid change in the next 20 years. We don't know if it's going to look like out there. We don't know it's going to be there. We have, all of us, everyone in this district has huge dreams for E474. We put our hopes and our prayers there for them. And I think what we're doing here is really unproductive. What we need to do is leave it alone, you know, like we already decided to do. And we will face this monster when it's time to do something out there. It isn't going to hurt if it's called. It's not going to hurt anyone at all to leave it like it is. And to change it is, doesn't make any sense at all. I keep hearing the people talk about getting business rent. This is a horrible move when people talk about getting business rent. We're telling our developers who invested millions and billions of dollars in this community that we're going to change on you, and we don't care what you do. And I don't think that's fair. It's not fair to our residents. It's not fair to the CDC. It's not fair to the developers. And we're not being fair to ourselves. I don't want to see anybody's feelings here. And I understand that you put a lot of thought and a process. You know a lot more about this than I do. But I want you to understand that we have to make these decisions because you invited us to do that. And I just pray that you respect those and know that we do make these decisions for the very, very best of our community.
Mr. Marini.
I'll present the vote side, that some of the arguments that we made, there's nothing worth playing your advocate. It can be suggested, and very rightly so, that our comprehensive plan as it is right now is incomplete, that to be determined. You know, our comprehensive plan is supposed to be held as its hallmark achievement, which I think it is. But what do our planners say when they hold up this hallmark achievement? And they, and people ask, well, what about that 250 acre to be determined? What about that? What happened there? I think it's easy for people to say, well, council took the easy way out of that one. And they didn't give anyone what they wanted, except they pushed it out to a date. I think it's fair to say that the property question is not going to be developed within 20, 20 years from now. But why, why should that hinder us from making the decision sooner rather than later? We have this amazing comprehensive plan, and it's incomplete, that to be determined. It's just sitting there, and no one knows what it is, with all these moving guidelines for everything else. I understand the difference between zoning and land use. Having been born and raised in an area that I think has very much trouble with zoning, I've seen the effects that it can have, and the guidelines I think are important to have in place. When you have houses next to industrial, I don't think anyone intended that to be the way, the way it ended up being. So when you have these guidelines in place, it makes it more difficult for situations like that to occur. So I think that it's, I don't think we're doing anything wrong, right, by deciding tonight. I think on that night where we decided that it was going to be to be determined, we knew that eventually either us or another council would have to eventually decide. You know, it's easy to make an argument that we essentially wanted it to another future council to decide, and what if we get out of it? An incomplete, incomplete comprehensive plan? So here we get, we're faced with a decision tonight that we can, we can fulfill that comprehensive plan. We can, we can have those guidelines in place. It's only that nothing is set in zone, this isn't a zoning document, but it means that we have a complete and unified vision for where the city will go in the next 15, 200 years, even more than that.
Mr. Teeter.
This is the last time I speak on this. To the Citizens Advisory Board, I think you've done an excellent job. You're very knowledgeable. I do, however, feel differently than you, Mr. Marini. This is just a tiny stigma in this comprehensive plan. At the time when the committee met and all, I'm sure they didn't know about when this owner purchased this land, that he was unaware that the land use may change at all. Maybe in a business owner in the city of Denver, if I had went on my business and five years later they changed the comp plan, I lost millions. Well, you've lost a lot more than that, if that were the case. I don't know what would happen. So I want to treat everybody fairly here, and I think 99% of the comp plan, I'm for, I also, you know, feel that we need to be fair to this, to this developer. And if they had a price at the table at the time, maybe things would have changed a little bit differently. But I also hope that during my decision making, the three criterias that they do meet. Thank you.
Mr. Besson, please. Yes, so Mr. Gaylor, speaking to the point that was just raised by Ms. Teeter, if you have zoning and you have an existing operating business, what are the chances that the zoning is not going to change so that it puts you out of business with it? But we're talking about here a completely undeveloped property, and nobody's projecting it's not going to be developed for 10, 15, 20 years.
It's a totally different criteria when you're talking about amending a zoning ordinance than it is when you talk about amending a comp plan.
Or if I purchased vacant land and thought it was zoned for a particular, that's what I meant.
If it's zoned, your answer is not applicable to what this situation is, because here we're talking about changing the comp plan. Changing zoning would be a different answer for you.
Mr. Bullock.
Now, maybe Ms. Teeter misunderstood, this land is not zoned yet, so changing the comp plan isn't going to change anything.
I worded that incorrectly. I didn't mean it as that way, though.
Okay. If we look at page seven of the Planning Commission's hearing, it says right there that this land was planned for a certain designation in the new land's plan when he bought it. And none of it was single-family housing. It was hotels, high, commercial use, and high density residence.
And I didn't know it was a whole family according to this certain book.
That's what I'm saying. High density residences, like upscale, like apartments and stuff like that. But it wasn't zoned for any residential. And, and that's what's funny about it. They actually came along and fixed the flaw. And that flaw was take the residential out of that area and move it back further so no residential will ever be impacted by DIA. Now, we know DIA is there, and we know that they have a 20-year plan of building another runway that is going to be within less than 2,500 feet of where this property is going to be tested, where it is. Why would we, as a council, when you sit down on council, the first thing you're saying is you're sitting down here looking out for the residents, past, present, and future? You know, we live on our history, and we've seen the history of Stapleton. Why would we want to repeat that? It just goes to show that if we have a good illustration of what not to do, why would we do it? And that illustration is for Beck Street over by Stapleton. They moved a whole airport because of a residential area. Now, we're talking about putting a residential area within that same footage of an airport, and you find nothing, nobody finds nothing wrong with this. It seems like it's okay. When you bought this land in 2005, that designation was there. And if you look at your, if you look at it, that big red block you see is what they were talking about. That pink red block meant no residential area that is not for residential. So why would we change that? It's not that we snuck something to do on him or the CAC or the Planning Commission. It was there when he bought it. That runway was designated when he bought it. We, I mean, this isn't something that was secret, and all of a sudden he found out about it. And everybody knows a comp plan will change sometimes yearly, sometimes every five years. But ours took a long time to be changed, and it has been done. Why would we go against the people that work over here to do the best for the city?
Mr. Marini.
Again, I'm trying to listen carefully to what I'm hearing, and it's as if we didn't hear that the modification that's being proposed is actually in keeping with the very principles that were defined within the comp plan that I hear Solina being forced. Mr. Marini, I see your point. I don't know that we want to leave the hole, and it is a beautiful comp plan. I was an early and biggest supporter of the effort, our wage comprehensive plan that is undertaken in the last year and a half. I don't want to see it so unfinished. I don't want to see this line linger. And again, I'll go back to my air comments. I think there's a middle way here which says, let's step back, let's look objectively at the criteria that our CAC has established. The proposal that has been put in front of us, albeit very recently, needs point for point the very criteria that I hear Solina being, being led to say, do away with the TPD designation. Why would we not allow for one more round of discussion? It hurts no one. It allows our CAC to reengage and do the job that we've asked them to do, and come back with a final determination. I'm fine to say that whatever comes out of that dialogue between Mr. Foster and the CAC, we will ultimately take as a final. But I think it's, there is no reason not to allow for that subsequent discussion with the intent of, as Mr. Marini said, put it in file, put it on the comp plan.
Mr. Gaylor, before I start through the list again, what I'm hearing from Mr. McElhenney is different than any of our choices, but I think I can understand, please correct me if I'm wrong. We don't make any decisions today. Everything that's there stays exactly where it is now, that we somehow find a way of reconvening the CAC. We put Mr. Foster and his group back there if that's where the beginning is, and we see that sometime in the future that goes along with what Mr. Marini was saying, that maybe it shouldn't have an undecided on it. It goes along with what I think I hear from everybody else. It just stays. And again, hopefully I'm saying what Mr. McElhenney said. It doesn't appear that we're going to see this today or tomorrow anyway. What's it going to hurt to send it back to the people who are feeling neglected or whatever, frustrated, because it appears there's more information out now than there is today? I don't know if that's an option to do, Mr. Marini. Throw it back to you, and then this whole thing's lighting up again, but at least you get some kind of.
Well, if that option were to be pursued, what it would take in order to stay starting the case all over again is that you continue this hearing and refer to CAC for response back within the period of time that you set. And then after you have done that, then the CAC convenes, and they make their recommendation after having meetings as necessary with Mr. Foster and his client, and then it comes back with their new recommendation. That's one approach. And that would, if that's the direction you're going, say, starting the case all over again, then there's going to be further consideration, because the option would be is you close this public hearing, leave it as it is with the direction to send it back to CAC. But then what would happen is after the CAC hears it, goes to Planning Commission again, we have to re-advertise, we start the whole proceeding all over again. So I really wouldn't recommend that approach. The better approach is, you already got this evidence before you. This hearing has gone on and on, and if you're going to do that, you send it to the CAC with the continuation of this proceeding, then to report back to you in X number of days. Now, I don't know how the staff feels about that approach, but that would be, my observation is to have a hand in that, if that's what the council chose to do.
Mr. Besson. I think Mr. Gaylor covered, said, I was not to make. And I wonder if the CAC, which has been disbanded now about four or five months, do they want to get back together? And it should be the same people with a background going back two years on these issues, so it should be the same. But this is a big imposition on our staff and the CAC, which is not getting paid anything. This our staff is getting paid their salaries to start over on this. I just. Charles Marini, just on the sound.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir.
Are you done? Yes. Mr. Bullock.
When you look at the two, the three designations that we're asked to choose between, the to be determined things as they are, DIA technology classification, no residential allowed within that DIA boundary, and the E470 mixed use, where on the other side of the road that moves offline, that all residential is allowed, single-family, multi-family, 440 dwelling units per acre, with no industrial uses allowed. Now, as a council, you know, we know that, we've seen it up north, we've seen it all over the city. The first thing to be developed is always single-family development. I'm going to go back over this as I did back in April. And the own, single-family development, you get it done, you get out. And then it's the city problem. You know, the fact that it says all residential allowed is, to me, is a red flag that everybody here should just be aware of, because all residential allowed means that the first thing they're going to do on the other side of Pivotalik is put single families. And that purple designation, which is DIA technology on the other side of the street, is that going to enhance single family, or is it going to be a burden to it? And when you look at the map and everything, it shows right here, DIA technology, here's a runway, here's single family. I sometimes wonder if we are here for the best interest of the citizens, or we're just here for ourselves. Because this should be a no-brainer, because you know what's coming, and you know how it's going to be done, but we're sitting here like this is. But we're sitting here like this is okay. I sat on this council in nineteen ninety when we first started annexing and I watched everything come along. We had a general come tonight, and the only thing he was asking for was a grocery store up north that hasn't come along yet with all the single-family and high-density residential. What makes you think that anything besides single-family is going to be what's being built if we approve the designation for E470 mixed use?
Mr. Mayor, I think there's a solution to this dilemma. Mr. Foster has a statement to make to this council.
Thank you. So what we don't want to do is waste Washington time. I candidly thought that the idea of going back to the CAC or to that process may make a lot of sense. I didn't want to make a determination tonight, adopt a new plan. You know, I've known some of the folks on the CAC for years. I respect them. And I don't want them to have to go through, you know, kind of a waste of time and process. So here's what we're willing to do. We're willing to accept the DIA technology on the two hundred and fifty acres. I'm sorry that we've already wasted people's time tonight. And I'm sorry that something was said tonight that can't be taken back. However, having said that, I want you to understand that we've done this process because we genuinely believe that there was a better solution. But candidly, I've been around land uses and city politics for a long time. I understand the significance of the time that people have already given out here in the audience, and I want to be respectful of that. I do want to share this fact. That as we began the process of annexing the hundred and fifty acres around the intersection E470, what I didn't expect was to get a letter from DIA that talked about ground rubble extending to E470. Candidly, not only was that disappointing, it was shocking. And you see, that's the point that we were making four months ago when we talked about the camel's nose under the tent. Because it happens. It happens a thousand feet at a time. And slowly but surely, the power of DIA continues to move and influence the decisions that this particular city council makes. So we were trying to get a place open for certain land uses within that board. You know why? We want, and I think the city deserves it. And we'll accept the DIA technology, land use dedication, reference in comprehensive plan. But I do want those of you who are on council tonight, who are going to be here for the next year, and those of you who are going to be here beyond that, to remember that there has to be at some point a lot of demarcation where you can build residential near the airport. You have multiple references of two thousand feet from the property line, of three quarters of a mile from the runway, and now a letter that has thirty-three hundred feet. There has to be a point where there's a lot. And my client needs the opportunity to comprehensively plan that thirteen hundred acres to include, yes, even some residential. Is it going to happen in two fifty? Now, with this designation, we're okay with that. And I appreciate all the time that you've spent talking. I'm sorry that it has created such consternation, seriously. Sorry that it has. And I apologize to the people here who have had to listen to you. And that's where we are.
Mr. Carson. Mr. McEnroe. Mr. Benson. Yes, Mr. Foster, I want to thank you for that statement. I think you're an excellent attorney and you represent your client well tonight.
We're going to close the public hearing.
I mean, I have to ask if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on this. I'm not arguing today. I got one of those too, but we have to do it. Mr. McEnroe, do you have a comment?
I will just quickly say that the people that will be here on council duly noted and heard very well, and so thank you for your statement.
Seeing no one else come forward as you're public hearing, I would now entertain a motion to accept the findings and recommendations. Mr. Bullock.
A motion to find the findings and recommendations of the planning commission.
Mr. McEnroe. I have a motion and a second to accept the findings and recommendations of the planning commission. Is there any discussion? Mr. Benson. I was going to approve the adoption of the ordinance, so I can also pick this book up. Do you have a comment? And we're pushing the second to approve findings, recommendations, and planning commission ordinance eighteen twenty-three, seeing that there's no discussion. Quest of opposed, all is opposed, and the same, all right?
Aye.
All is opposed, the same. Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve ordinance eighteen twenty-three. Mr. Benson, approve the adoption of ordinance eighteen twenty-three. Mr. Teeter.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance eighteen twenty-three. Is there any discussion, Mr. Benson? With the city adjournment, please read the title.
Title reads, "Ordinance remaining in comprehensive plan in city comprehensive power, over re-classifying the properly described exhibit a past year's room and a part here of, and located east of E470 between Ninety-sixth and One Hundred and Twelfth Avenues from the original designation of the PPD to DIA technology."
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn it. Read the title, will I? The vote is eight to one, motion passed, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, city managers' recommendations regarding departmental budget request. Mr. Flannery, if you would, bring it forward. I see how people do that.
Mr. Mayor. Can I ask you?
I can bring it.
You easily could, sir. I am showing it is now eight forty-nine, while we can be in nine o'clock, eleven minutes. Mr. Teaklumber, you're on, or Mr. Flannery, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going to be a taxi between Roger and I. And I think what you'll see tonight is some of the progress that's been made since the meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, and some developments. What you're getting right now is a copy of the legislative budget. And that legislative budget, we asked that you look at it because that's the council's budget. And so if you have issues, such as conferences that aren't on there or tournaments that we missed somehow or some other kind of omission, and then you'll see as reflected in the reappraisal ordinance, the council discretionary fund per council member is at fifteen hundred, reflective of the budget from the reappraisal ordinance. So with that...
Question?
Have you asked us? And this is probably going to be handled. Have we gone back through the things that we've done this year that we didn't plan for last year? As an example, last year when we did the budget, we said we'd always send half our people to Washington, but Washington came up, we all went. Have we decided that online, is that what you've put in this budget at this point? Or is that what you're going to be asking for when Mr. Teaklumber is done? Actually, Mr. Mayor, the council has the prerogative of that, of the entire budget. But specifically on the legislative budget, that's what we anticipate either, and that's one of the questions tonight, is do you want to talk about the legislative budget next week and possibly save some time on the thirteenth? Or do you want to go to the thirteenth and have that full discussion? I think, you know, this budget, and I don't want to give it any bad luck, but it's actually moving pretty easy this year considering some of the things that we've received. As far as some of our past decisions and how we structure the budget, they're coming into fruition as far as looking at the budget gap. So I'm hopeful that we'll have a discussion. We can bring it up and put it on the agenda for next week for discussion, if you want to go through it. But we typically have gone through it on the daily retreat, and that's fine. But we do have, we do have those, that information on what, on what we've missed and, or what's come up that we've chosen to go ahead and fund.
Yes.
So, for example, we have rubbery and those types of things. So we will have those and that list prepared. And if you as a council decide to have that next week, then we'll have that rubbery next week.
Yeah, the time is not important. It's just that we don't wind up at the same place we were last year if we're saying it's not what you agreed to. So you're fine. You're on, sir, aren't you?
No, not at all. And so this is an overview. Last meeting discussed the economy on a broad scale and on a statewide scale and on a local scale. We looked at the revenues and the budget over the year this year. Tonight, we will review the department requests. We will look at options for use of the one-time tax settlement and the options for filling the gap between revenues and the expenditures. And we'll also look at the recommended twenty amount of budget. The city's philosophy in the budget process has been to balance budget where ongoing expenditures match ongoing revenues. Not always easy in these difficult financial times. Evaluating expenditures in current year and next year's budget year. Direct one-time revenues towards one-time expenditures and capital projects. Keep our workforce whole. You've heard us say it, that employees are our number one resource. And I know that there have been other discussions. But when we look at the customer service, it's been our number one mission. And the public is our number one customer. And we are here as employees and our number one resource to provide those services. Provide first-class service to our citizens and public. Maintain current levels of service. Continually improve operational efficiencies. Evaluate all options. And you may recall, we really look at every option possible. When, when we looked at different financial mechanisms for the golf course, certainly some were not realistic, i.e. open space as a potential designation. But we look at all options when we look at the budget. There isn't any specific option that we will not have a conversation on and bring to the council for the discussion. Project at least one year in advance to anticipate future budget situations. Position the city to sustain economic downturns and robust growth. And I believe we've done that, and we will continue to do that if we look at conservative approach in our budget and financing. Maintain healthy reserves and use them as a last resort. That's been a philosophy that's been successful and painful for some of the funds that we've tapped into. Now, we will continue to implement the city's plans, i.e. the complan and we just had a conversation on, and the economic development strategic plans, all of our transportation plans. All of those go into economics sustainability and well-planned cities for financial health. So the twenty-ten goals were position the city to weather the recession, take care of what we have, provide for the employees, propose a balanced budget to the council. The accomplishments that we've accomplished is moved, we've moved away from using one-time dollars to fund operations. We've reduced staff positions by attrition to match reduced revenues and workforce. So, for example, when building downturn occurred, we went from fourteen hundred tournaments a year to a hundred. You know, as, as staff in the building department took on other jobs, they were not, they did not have a hundred inspection a day. So when they went off and took other jobs, we did not fill those positions. So that's the attrition that we talked about. Even with reduced revenues, we have kept the ratio of salaries to revenues at forty-five percent and the ratio of salaries and benefits to revenues at fifty-five percent. This is a mechanism that was put in place by my predecessor and Mr. Teaklumber. I think it's a great tool, it's a great guide to actually measure yourself against. And if you're going above those, then you're looking at a different ratio that you may want to make sure it's an alarm system. It's making sure that you're keeping things in check. Staff was asked to present a flat budget this year in requests, and they have done well, coming back with reasonable requests. And that's part of the reason it's simple this year, more simple this year. But I think part of it has been an evolution of understanding throughout the staff, throughout the departments, as well as the DCMs, and getting that message communicated. So when we had requests this year, they were very finite and specifically targeted. So that's a success. So my goals, again, are very similar. To continue to maintain high-level services, maintain the city's ability to weather this recession. There's been discussion, and if you watched any of the political talk shows on Sunday or over the weekend, there's a lot of talk about double tipping and the economy going into a W. So we're having to be very cognizant of how we perceive. So what may look very rosy, again, I feel a little bit like when I, when I talk to Roger and tell him, when he finishes meetings, everybody's very depressed. So, you know, when I, when I say this, I just mean that you don't know where the economy's going to go. So we have to look at comprehensively the windfall in some revenues this year. We have to be very careful. And now we're programming the, certainly the immediate responses to, let's go, put this up, put this on some project. And we may do that, and the council may want to do that as well. But without, we have to have a full conversation about it. We look at the providing for the employees, propose a balanced budget to council, position the city to take advantage of opportunities. The twenty-eleven general fund initial request, and this was initially requested in June, department's severals were forty-five thousand, or forty-five million, I'm sorry. Now, so when we talk about that, that's, that's a flat, that's a flat budget. And that is basically the budget of the city that operates the city. So all the departments and the requests of operating the city are in that number. And the obligations that we have are in form of debt services and different types of funds that add up to about three million and nine. Request for the housing authority was sixty thousand. Total request equals forty-nine million. Escalated revenues that we anticipated this year are at twenty-four million. So you see that there's a gap. And that gap, it should be noted as evident there. Does not include budget enhancements, special consideration items, new positions, and new vehicles. So after July is typically spent with the deputy city managers and the budget team going through the different budgets of the departments. And then August has been dedicated to my review of the city departments and then coming through council in these study sessions. So the requested operating budget, forty-four million and nine. City council will discuss their legislative budget, and that's the, you brought that up earlier, Mayor. Should we look at that possibly next week or on the thirteenth? The enhancements and special considerations totaled eighty-six thousand. New positions that are being recommended totaled three hundred and sixty-eight thousand that we're proposing. New positions that are being recommended totaled $368,000 that we're proposing. Transfer to the housing authority is $60,000, the retirement fund is $2,000, and debt transfer of $3.9 million. Budget recommendation this year is $49,300,000. Revenue estimate again is $44 million. Recommended expenditure, as I stated, is $49. Proposed to the program fund balances that, I'm sorry, we proposed to program fund balances for about $3.9 million, about $4.9 million. There's currently a gap, and remember on the last slide, we talked about the enhancements. So, with the enhancements, there's currently a gap of 1.2 million. So, you, you can see that we went from about $4.3 million, I believe, two weeks ago to about 1.2, and that number again will change by the time you see it. But this will also, this also shows that we have a, different, different positions and recommendations that are part of that. So, no 2010 one-time tax case settlements have been proposed to fill that gap at this time, and I guess that's a philosophy also that I have in, in going through this budget, is that because you have a fund, because you have a, a reserve or a, a tax settlement case that comes in, that doesn't save you from going through the exercise of seeing how the budget should be processed and where those funds might be, as if you didn't have those, those types of revenues coming in through on settlements. Because once you start programming yourself in that way, then you start becoming, I used the example last year, as a, as a, somebody who's addicted to a drug, they, they get addicted to that one-time revenue, and that one-time revenue wasn't always there. So, we, we go through the exercise regardless of that one-time revenue, and that's what you'll see in the, in the presentation as we go along. So, there are three major settlements, and I think we've given the, the credit to certainly finance and the attorney's office and CMO's office, but these are always coordinated efforts. And so, in, in May, we received a $3.9 million payment. In July, we received a $4.5 million payment, and in August, we received $1.2 million in, in the different tax cases. And some of these have been significant in a, in a way that they've been pending for years and have been prolonged, and I think coming in with a triple approach from three different departments and putting pressure on different individuals have resolved some of those. Pure litigation on others, I think, and to the credit to both finance and the attorney's office for putting those, those records together and such good work. We may reach the end of 2010 with about $7.7 million more in revenue than we estimated. These settlements offer unique opportunities, of course. Options for the use of one-time tax settlements, and I will say, I'll practice this by saying that we ought to be cautious, and, and you hear me say that, and I, I'm, in all candor, I'm very serious when I say that we should not necessarily go out and program these funds by way. However, we want to go through again the exercise to show you what some of these possible, possibilities are to look at. Reserve, and the first option is, of course, the one that I prefer, is to reserve in the general fund balance for 2012 in contingency for, in case of the passage of 6061 and 101. And we just don't know what's going to happen there. We've done our best guess at putting those numbers together with the impact severity, but we don't know if those are approved, what the reality is here. So, we also look at possible covering of 2011 revenue shortfall of the $5 million. Cover the 2011 gap after using fund balances of 1.3. So, those are, those are different layers of complication. One is just taking the money and filling the gap. The other one is getting your gap to a point of, of, of going through the exercise internally and getting that gap down to a narrow gap, and then filling in with that, with that excess of tax revenue. Reserve for employee raises and benefits. Pay off 2002 revenue bonds at 1.5 million. Replenish some of, or all of the 2010 money that was moved from fleet and IT. Fund balances, 3.5 million, and those are those fund balances that we, that reuse themselves, but eventually there's a lid on that, and we need to look at replacing either equipment and, and computers in that time and fashion so that we aren't saving a nickel and spending a hundred dollars. Sorry, I did something wrong. Fund CIB projects. Pay off private apartment loan, which is 1.4 million. Strategies for use of one-time tax settlements. Here's, here's something, now, when you look at the bonds and you remember Roger's explanation of, of how these bonds work, if there's an incentive really to pay those off prior to the November election. So, if we did that, we could look at, at paying that money off, and it frees up about $670,11 and $690,12, and reduces the amount, move from the fund balances of internal services. So, again, the, the complication in that is we're taking, we're looking at moving about $2 million out of the, the fleet maintenance fund, and we might reduce that number by, let's say, $350,000, so that we're taking only about, you know, 1.65 out of that fund, and then letting $350,000 go back into this covering this balance. And I did do a very good job of explaining that, but basically, we're, we pay IT and renew it to a point of a certain amount of money, and then we would take the, the other portion of 67, we'd split it in half, basically, on two fund balances. Sorry about that, Tom, for your explanation, but basically, then that would cover the gap of the, with the tax revenue that we've cut, that we've received, and then also be allowed to meet whatever perceived potential problems that occur by the passage or some of the bail exemptions. Yes, yes, sir.
Now, saying what you just said, if 61 was to pass and we didn't pay off those revenue bonds, would you tell them what the ramifications would be, we're not paying them off and have them still out there in front of us, and what it would be after over a year because we did pay it off when we had a chance?
So, and I, I might, I might pump your question to Roger, however, I think partial answer is that we would be required to pay those bonds off, and when we did, we have to reduce our budget by that amount. So, we're, in the end, actually going in a hole in the war. You're paying it off, and then you're reducing the revenue, so you're actually, it's a double wing, so Roger, are you okay?
That's correct.
And free enough that $670,000 and $690,000 would not no longer be free up, it wouldn't be ours to be free yet, because it would be taken away from our budget to begin with.
Absolutely.
So, we would be punished upon being punished.
So, so-
Chair, just to make sure that I understand this, so if we decided to pay off the 2002 revenue bonds, potentially in, in a way would pay for itself in two years because that's right about $50,000 in 2011, is that correct? That's our fair payment?
So, and then we can also look at, I mean, and, and we do want to look at funding CIBs, and we do have a priority list on, on what those CIB projects will be, so that we're not simply just batting, batting down the shelter and not doing anything. We do want to look at targeted funds and how we spend them. So, before I kick it over to Roger, just to summarize, the budget proposals summary for 10, the amended budget is 49.3, for 11, we are looking at 49.3, about $20,000 difference, which is pretty, pretty on target. So, we look at the different revenue streams, and you see the budget not covered by, by revenue is 5.2. The fund balance we've looked at is 1.5 to cover, and then we looked at retained earnings, 2.2, and then partial recreation equipment, reserve fund balance, 84,000. And so, our current gap is 1.2, and I think as we go through this discussion, you'll see, if you'll have more ideas, we're not, we'd certainly welcome the questions, but you'll, you'll gather more information as we go through this discussion, and feel free to, feel free to contact us, whether it's over email or not, and we'll be talking about this again next week, but I wanted to, I'm going to have Roger take it up in there.
Good evening, Governor, Mayor, and Council. Just to recap, the city manager planner has covered the detail on this in previous slides, but right now, as it stands, with the possible use of the fund balance in the general fund of one and a half million, using retained earnings transferred from the two internal service funds of $2,225,000, or, I'm sorry, $2,250,000. Plus, there is a partial recreation equipment reserve fund balance that we can use to replace proposed equipment, and it amounted to $84,000, the 80. And then there's a special improvement district fund balance that is no longer needed, can be transferred to the general fund, $74,701. That would leave a gap of $1,200,000 approximately. Now, just to give you the definition of budget enhancements and special consideration items, budget enhancements are requested permanent changes resulting in ongoing increase or increases to the budget. In other words, it would be something that we would ask for that would change the size of a program's budget or add to the program. Whereas a special consideration item is just a one-time item that's requested for a one-time, non-recurring increase. So, for example, if we were to buy a smoke detector for who knows what, and it costs $10 million, that'd be a one-time request, and obviously it's a bogus item, but that's the illustration. So, here are the budget enhancements and special consideration items that are being presented to you. In intergovernmental, there's allocations, training, meetings and conferences, and membership dues. Those are added because of a change in the program where we moved the director or manager of that division into that division from city manager's office, and there was none of provision for those items, so that would have basically an amount of approximately $12,000. Community development, meetings and conferences, again, that sounds kind of inarticulous to this meeting because it's actually training for planners to maintain their certification, that'd be $2,063. Sending and finance, that would be a training in financial planning and budget, $2,000. Public safety, an increase in operating supplies, $12,200. Training for emergency management, team members, $1,500. Private security, prisoner transportation, that would be transporting prisoners to and from the court, from jails in various counties, $12,000. And what that does is it saves on police officer time, allows them to be out of control instead of transporting prisoners. Lice bolt, subscription, $3,000. And in public works, credit card fees, again, for customer service purposes, we've been adding credit card machines that each of the various departments can accept credit card payments because it's becoming more and more common. There are fees associated with that. We have discussed bringing to you proposal for a fee recruitment, basically a fee that would recruit those costs, and that will be part of presentation later. Then also assigned inventory implementation, that's going to be something that's required in an additional year to come out, so we saw this as an opportunity to get a start on that, that would cost $7,000. And then Blackberry phones for the engineering, keep them more in touch, $3,000. And partial recreation, seasonal employees, bring that back to the 2010 level, that would be $24,000, almost $400. There is only one special consideration item that's being proposed to you, we added it into this list, all the rest are budget enhancements. The special consideration item is the National Gold Medal Award Excellence Program, that's the, that would be $6,500, and that's, that's an award program to receive recognition for the outstanding work that's been done on the parks facilities. So, total of all of that is $86,903. Then in vehicle requests, the funding proposed is to replace existing vehicles, and that is to the tune of approximately $1 million, and that primarily replaces vehicles that have been deferred in previous years. And the fault of that, of course, is in police department public works, just given A, the number of police squad cars that need to be replaced each year, and B, the sheer cost of, like, dump trucks and sweepers that have been overworked. The total is just under a million dollars. There were three new vehicles requested, two of those vehicles are being recommended for purchase, and one vehicle request is being accommodated by reassigning existing The new positions that are recommended, in the Department of Information Technology, there's a need for GIS specialist in GIS division, there is a need for risk manager in resources administration division, there's a need for upgrading a part-time administrative specialist in partial recreation administration, upgrading that from part-time to full-time, and then also in partial recreation in parts maintenance, there's a need for operations tech slash specialist. In public safety administration, there's a proposal to add a 19 technician. Normally, we would add technicians in the information technology department, this person would be dedicated solely to maintaining lease equipment. The full year cost for that would be approximately $386,000. What is recommended are actually second quarter starts, which will drop that cost, and as you'll see later, we're talking about review of all of the positions, reviewing when they're actually needed, and reviewing those in light of how the economy is doing. And I just stole my thunder from this guy. So, due to lingering concerns of the national economy, and to emphasize that point, today I read an article from last Friday's Business Journal, if you get that, the Business Journal, but they were talking about existing home sales. At the last meeting, I said, existing homes, so they're up. Well, actually, as of July, they're down. That's just a new headline. So, things do change rapidly, and the intent is to allow executive management time to reassess these things in the first quarter of this coming year. That will give us an additional six months of information, and we'll be able to see what's happening with the national economy. So, we're asking you to approve these and approve funding for them, but in any case, we're asking to please, and then expect the management to review and determine when we should authorize each perceived as appropriate. Turning now to departmental budgets and variances, the department budgets show the 2010 amended budget, the 2011 request, and what is proposed for 2011. And then we break out the variances by the four major types of expenditure, personnel, materials and supplies, services and charges, and capital. So, turning to legislative, what is proposed is exactly, well, no, not exactly, a little bit larger amount than what was in the 2010 amended budget, so 499,000, but again, the caveat, that's subject to review, your discussion, your direction on what we want in that, as discussed earlier with the city manager. The division detail was handed out tonight, so maybe you can look over that, and if you have the opportunity to discuss on August 23, or wait until September, that's your choice, obviously. And the proposal number will change based on your discussion and direction. Legal, two thousand ten budget was eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. Requested for two thousand eleven is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, or is actually proposed, seven hundred and thirty thousand. And the changes basically come in outside services, reduction in other litigation, reduction in sales tax, reduction in employee slash labor, slight increase for human resources issues, and then a reduction in per gateway. And again, that's based on our analysis of things that are waning down and issues that are going away. City Manager's Office, City Manager Division, two thousand ten is one point two million. What's requested is a million, eighty-eight thousand. And what's being proposed is actually a million, ninety-eight thousand. Some of the variances there, the main item is moving the intergovernmental manager from City Manager's Office to intergovernmental division. And according to the services charges, also four figures. City clerk, two thousand ten is two hundred and eighty thousand. Requested was two hundred and eighty-five thousand, and what is proposed is two hundred and eighty-two thousand. Some of the changes there were the application of the new municipal code occurred in two thousand ten, so this number will be budgeted in two thousand eleven. But we do need budget for elections in two thousand eleven, at seven hundred and thirty thousand. Communications, five hundred and twenty-three thousand in two thousand ten, five hundred and forty-five thousand was requested, and what is proposed is five hundred and fifty-six thousand. Some of the changes there, salary and benefits, forty-one thousand, coming for a full-time position that was previously budgeted. Services and charges being reduced, and then materials and supplies being increased. Economic development, two thousand ten is five hundred and twenty-one thousand. What's requested was four hundred and seventy-two thousand. It was proposed is four hundred and sixty-three thousand. And the changes there was a change in services and charges of forty-four thousand, and materials and supplies down slightly. And then in intergovernmental, previously that was just the rent administrator in various associated programs. That was at ninety thousand in two thousand ten. What was requested initially was ninety-nine thousand, but of course with the move of the intergovernmental manager to this division, that now is one hundred and ninety-six thousand, and one hundred and ninety-seven in terms of what's proposed. And that's changes. Human resources, just a quick note, there's a new division here called Employee Activity. And what that is, is we've added an employee activity committee for many, many years. They existed before I came, and that's been here now. So, the proposal is to change that from an informal setting and make it an actual division under authority and review of the department director of human resources. So, three divisions then would be human resources itself, was seven hundred thousand in two thousand ten. What was requested was seven hundred and seven thousand, and that's the amount that is proposed. Organization development is at fifty-five thousand in two thousand ten. What was requested was forty-four thousand, seven hundred, and that is what is proposed. Employee activity did not exist in two thousand ten as a division of the city officially, but was requested for two thousand eleven as thirteen thousand, and that is what is Changes would be increase in services and charges for human resources. Organization development, services and charges would go down, and of course, employee activity is a division. Finance department, financial planning and budgeting was at four hundred and eighty-one thousand this year. What was requested was four hundred and thirty-five thousand, and what is proposed is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Change there is dropping salaries and benefits and increase in service, services and charges. Financial services, nine hundred and forty-five thousand in two thousand ten. Requested was nine hundred and thirty-one, and was proposed is nine hundred and thirty-one. Changes there was actually reducing the salary and benefits. And that's, that's a transfer version from financial services to financial planning and budgeting. Actually, there should be a positive number, should basically. Sorry, correct that in the presentation. And then services and charges having to be reduced. Judicial, I'm sorry, excuse me, tax. Tax budgeted at a million, and that is, let me go back. Financial services and charges, that's actually a trade with tax. That's the change there. What we did was we changed a part-time position in financial services to full-time, and changed the full-time position in tax to part-time. So, we'll be showing some of that in more detail later. Judicial, five hundred and thirty, five hundred and fifty-one thousand in two thousand ten, and what's requested is five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, and that's what is proposed. Internal services was six point nine million in two thousand ten. Was requested was six point six million, seven point six million, and what is proposed is actually eight point two million. And what's happened there are the insurance premiums that come in significantly higher than what the present is here. And then organizational services and charges increased, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand as well. Community development, administration, four hundred and seventeen thousand in two thousand ten. What's requested for two thousand eleven, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, and then was proposed is that same, eight ninety-nine. Planning, four seventy-four. What was requested was four seventy-nine, and that is proposed. Building safety was a million. And what was requested in nine thirty-three was proposed in nine thirty-eight. Neighborhood services was at one point two, seven five. What was requested is one two, seven seven, and that is what is proposed. Housing was at eight, six thousand. What was requested is eight, five thousand, and that is what's proposed. You can see what changes and major variances were. The planning building safety was due to the temporary reconsideration in two thousand Police department administration, two thousand ten was one point four. What was requested is one point four, six six, and that is what's proposed. Support operations, three point one million, and they requested three point two. And we went down slightly in terms of what's proposed, three point two, six six. Patrol, seven point seven million, what was requested was seven point five million, and slightly less than that is proposed, seven point five, two six. Community justice was supposed to be at two ninety-nine. Was proposed, or what was requesting is two fifty, and that is what's proposed. Special investigation duty was at five hundred and six thousand, and what was requested is five hundred and five thousand, and that is what's proposed. Emergency management was at one seventy-one. They requested one ninety-one, and was proposed one eighty-three. And you can see the major variances in terms of services and charges and salaries and And then community justice, one of the main changes there was courts法, it was budgeted in two thousand ten. And there was one position funded by grants, and that grant money reduces, so we need to pick that up to us, actually, in salary and benefits. Public works, administration, budgeted at four hundred and twenty-five thousand this year. What was requested was four twenty-two, and that is what is proposed. Street traffic, budgeted at two million, six seventy. What was requested was two million, five thirty-one. Was proposed is two million, five ninety-two. 提起 collection, budgeted at one point eight million this year. What was requested was one million, eight hundred and forty thousand, and that is what's proposed. Engineering, requested one million, eight sixty-six. I'm sorry, what was budgeted was one million, eight sixty-six. What was requested was one million, eight forty-seven, and that's what is proposed. You can see the variances. Street traffic went down, and services and charges about seventy-eight thousand. And services and charges in the提起 collection went down by fourteen thousand. And then services and charges in engineering went down by fourteen thousand. Partial recreation administration, two thousand ten budget was one point one million. The request was less, one point one, one eight, and that is what's proposed. Parts maintenance, two and a half million. What was requested was two million, five hundred and seventy-three thousand. What's proposed is two million, five seventy-five. Recreation programs, budgeted at two million, two hundred and fourteen thousand this year. They requested two million, two ninety-six, and that is what's proposed. Community events, budgeted at one fifty-eight. They requested one million, or, sorry, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, and that is what's proposed. So total organization, two thousand ten budget, forty-four million in terms of the operating portion of the budget. What was requested was forty-four million, three hundred and nine thousand. What's proposed is forty-four million, nine thirty-three. City still has to cope with county mandates. There's both federal and state mandates. These are some of the examples of federal mandates, national including discharge elimination system, which I pronounce another new name in the acronym. American Disabilities Act, Oklahoma's Act, HIPAA, gas leave, public merits, et cetera. Non-city agency grants, actual grants have been one hundred thousand the last couple years. Golf tournaments, what we spent last year was five thousand, the year since five thousand, seventy-nine dollars. And what's been spent so far this year is five thousand, three hundred dollars. Fundraisers last year spent seven thousand. This year so far has been six thousand. So rental last year, or two thousand nine, was one hundred and twelve thousand, eight ninety-five. What's been spent so far this year, one hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred. Two thousand eleven compared to two thousand ten, so total operating budget, forty-nine million, three million in two thousand ten, and was proposed for two thousand eleven, forty-nine million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So difference of almost twenty thousand dollars, as City Manager noted earlier. So basically flat. That's in spite of operating and maintenance costs that have arisen due to general inflation and fuel utility costs, increased fees by agencies such as ATCOM and Howard's County Animal Shelter. And then, as I noted earlier, health insurance premiums, what's been quoted to us has increased significantly, looking at two thousand ten plan. So that's being reviewed and will be discussed on a monthly basis with those insurance companies, and hopefully final recommendations can be brought to us September thirteenth. So here's the summary again. Basically, estimated operating revenues of forty-four million, one thirty-four. Full operating budget, forty-four million, nine thirty-three. Enhancement requested eight-six thousand, nine twenty-three. New positions, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Total housing, authority transfers, sixty thousand. Electric official, repairment, one, thirty-two thousand. And then the transfer debt service, three point ninety-nine. That number will change if you elect it to refund the two thousand two revenue balance to earth. So what's not covered by revenue is the five point two million. We have fund balance in the general fund of one and a half million. We have retained earnings that we can transfer back to general fund, but two million, one hundred and fifty thousand. And then the reserve fund in partial recreation equipment and the SID, leaving a gap of one point two million, which the City Manager literally, we have money that we can fill that gap. It's just a question, do you want to fill that gap or fill the different gap? So, looking at our two thousand ten year-to-date budget status, year-to-date due to excellent tax audit revenues, revenues currently exceed expenditures, and financing, executive management for the economy. Compensation, there's currently, the budget numbers are smooth, a pool of wage increases, but the final decision is not to be made on that as well. CIE proposals, that is on our list to be discussed at the next meeting, on August twenty-three. So our list will be coming out here. What we're recommending in terms of funding is that the projects that we can recommend are those that can be funded by restricted revenues, such as Adams County Transportation Act, Solid Waste Fifty P Revenue, Ladder Cones, Adams County Open Space Fund, Small Home IP Retained Earnings. So the actual projects do need to be determined. Those will be determined with final analysis by City Manager. But here's what's next. The preliminary budget will continue to be refined prior to official proposed budget presentation to you. August twenty-three, there will be a discussion of the legislative budget, which will be the CIE projects presented to you. There'll be a presentation regarding the long-range financial planning timeline. And that timeline will actually include the revenue enhancement discussion. That would be not discussed next time, but it would be, we have the context of the long-range financial planning. And then you will ask you to provide direction on what we want us to cover on September thirteenth. And then on September thirteenth, just to remind you, that's from three to ninth now. That's the budget meeting, and that will be the council's discussion and direction on the budget. And then on October thirteenth, we'll present the actual proposed budget to you. And then October eighteen is when you open the public hearing and continue it on to the next meeting, which will be November first. And on the November first meeting, you close that public hearing, back on the budget and certify in a way. So just to recap the first slide, it's always good to end on the same main points. Then we will continue to refine the budget, as Mr. Tinklerberg said, will be budgeting, continue to maintain our high level of services, maintain cities' ability to weather this recession, take care of what we have, provide for employees, propose a balanced budget to council, position city to take advantage of the opportunities that are in front of us. With that, Mr. Mayor, I do want to say a few things. I want to take an opportunity to go off of this presentation and just really thank the different departments of the city. Part of the, part of the reason it's so much smoother, I think, in this year is because the departments from frontline employees all the way through division managers and department heads have looked at their budgets and wanted the department heads to come up with these recommendations. So, when we went through them, there, each year, we've basically said, I don't think the belt can be tightened anymore. And with this year's presentation, I think some real necessities came forward. Mainly, I think in some of the positions and some of the vehicles, they've reached a critical point. And I think to not, to not see that would be negligent. And I think that's why you see those recommendations. And if you look at the overall gap, it's mainly covered by a debt service that we've incurred. The, the rest of that request is fairly humble, if you, if I may say so, in regard to how we looked at moving forward. And if you may recall, I don't know, who knows, will write your hands on that thing, but last week, you presented a chart that showed a really very slow incline, flat rate of growth in our budget. And I think that's significant in that take note of, because those are really mandated costs that we have to provide for through utilities and fuel and different mandates, as Mr. Tinklerberg mentioned. So with that, I would open up any questions with Mr. Rentsch.
Yes, thank you. Roger, what is our total for that service annual?
Just speaking off the top, my head is approximately, it's below over four million. What I show you is the transfer, that three hundred and ninety-nine, that's a transfer from general fund to debt service. There's also revenue that comes in through the Department of Municipal Authority, and that's basically the tax payments that occur on the per gateway. And then there are also, there's also a payment from the chronicle that helps pay off the sixty-four million dollar bond issued, or the two bond issues for Probeck Street, fifty-six thousand.
How do you think outside compare with other jurisdictions of our size or whatnot? That sounds really pretty good. It sounds kind of low, and that's below over four million dollars for debt service. How do you, do you get it?
Well, you, there's a number of ways of viewing it, uh, one is you look at the total debt compared to a sub-valuation, you can use that measure, you can use the metric of what's the total amount of debt service compared to your operating budget, so, and it varies from city to city. To answer the gist of your question, yes, we have a fairly low debt service compared to many other cities.
And I guess you're, uh, we discussed before, uh, the reason for paying off some of the revenue lines, or so, you don't get stuck, amendment sixty-one passed if I had to reduce our taxes by paying off the loan, is that right?
Yes, it offers a strategic and practical advantage. Well, uh, the strategic advantage is dealing with the possibility that amendment sixty-one might pass in November, uh, because what that does, as mentioned earlier, is it requires cities, or all of the departments, to reduce their tax revenues by an equivalent amount to what they're paying out in debt service payment. And with us, we have a bond issue that will be paid off in two thousand and thirteen, and that is that two thousand and two refunded, uh, serious bonds. And that practical advantage would be, if we pay that off now, then we don't have to make those two debt service payments in two thousand and one and two thousand and twelve.
Right.
So that has helped our operating budget in those two years as well.
It also helps us if sixty-one passes.
Correct.
We don't, and I think that we're doing everything that we can to mitigate what could happen, uh, and we just had a meeting at equal seventy last week, uh, equal seventy's got about a hundred and thirty million dollar budget, a hundred million in that debt service. Think about that, think about that. Can I answer your earlier question?
Six more minutes.
I'm sorry. Can I answer your earlier question, the total debt service that we have is four ninety-seven hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Right.
But that's pretty good, that's ten percent of our total cash flow.
Yes.
It's pretty good. Mr. Mariano?
Just want to echo, um, Mr. Mayor, my compliments to staff, I'm, uh, in awe of his presentation and the work that's gone into it. Uh, it gives me further respect and admiration for your office, Mr. Tinklerberg, this, this shot can't be easy, so, so thank you for that. I did have a question about, um, was last year the first year that we transferred IT and fleet maintenance to the general fund, or has that been occurring over a couple of years now?
We have, uh, transferred money from IT over several years, uh, last year was the first year for fleet maintenance.
Okay, uh, and so IT, um, do you know when that, that started, or is it just for the last three or four years here?
I want to say we, like, you know, two thousand and seven or two thousand and eight. I, I think it's probably, it started probably, uh, in the July, August, early.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your compliment, I really keep a fast, long compliment to Jason Leslie, our budget performance analyst, he does the bulk of this work, and, uh, the good parts are truthful, truthful.
Mr. Mayor, is there?
Well, I go, uh, Mr. Mayor's compliments, I think, uh, the, uh, process seems to revive just a little bit each year, and I think, uh, we're seeing evidence of the, what is ongoing after few, two years, we can, ever lies about decisions that we make relative to budget, um, whole market expenses and operating budgets, and then just, uh, I feel better, even with the, uh, the overall, and any of this budget discussion, of, of the scrutiny that is accomplished at this point, so I appreciate that, and look forward to, uh, we can do, we can refine and, and, uh, our discussion.
You know, the compliments, the entire council, uh, which is good, and I'm sure a lot of us talk to other councils, municipalities in the area, not going that easy. This is city two or west now, so they go to four, four tens, so they can shut their buildings down for a few days. It's scary out there, and so the others, it's, we've done a phenomenal job here in Congress.
Okay, on to the next. Do you have more, Mr. Tinklerberg, or is that, that's for me? Mr. Plenary, same? Okay. Next item on the agenda is administrative council business, again, this is not a request for services, it would be handled either by an S three C or by sending an email to Mr. Plenary, this would be strictly business that we're looking for the council to take some action on. Is there any administrative council business that you'd like?
Need to, uh, raise formally the request for a continuation of our review discussion with, uh, Mr. Plenary, um, we have a couple of, uh, considerations and schedule that are known, Mr. Plenary will be departing for a, a period due to his internship or exchange, and so we need obviously to account for completion of that before he departs. Uh, we also have a recent list of dealers for you, and that's on the topic for next week, um, and we'll propose a, a, and right now, I would ask that we have the scheduling discussion, we'll take it when that's in place, that, how much longer for us?
And, um, just knowing how far we got today with Mr. Plenary, is there any idea that we're going to be any cast to, Mr. Mayor, there's?
Um, you know, the only, uh, just restrictions would be, we can distribute the materials in advance, so everyone's ready to prepare for review of their own inputs.
Sure, be good. Okay, so we will, will we see that email?
Uh, I will, I check that through staff, and that staff really deserves it.
Okay.
The only difficulties are their, their minds being trained in it, and so, uh, we reasonably have staff differentiating.
Okay, that's what we need to, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, excuse me, I have three items. Uh, the San Creek meeting, um, last week, it was brought to our attention that Commerce City has money set aside to cut the bench at Fletcher property, uh, but the paperwork has never come through, and they're wondering, when are we going to cut that bench to have that property, San Creek? Um, there's a big question mark, and they know that the money's been appropriated, they know that everything is just like, they said the paperwork is, uh, is, is missing, has its one thing, and do you know anything about?
Councilmember, uh, Mayor and Councilmember, um, Boy, if I recall, the unions had raised the funds, and I don't believe those funds have been transferred to the city, I think what was waiting, uh, for the bench was some sort of consensus on the design for that honorary bench, if we're talking about the same bench.
Uh, I'm, um, not talking about a bench, I'm talking about the, oh, the trail bench, the trail bench that's come down there.
That bench. What we're waiting for on that is for the final determination from FEMA on the Kohlar and Old Mar, and I've got a note to follow up with Mr. Fletcher's engineer, and Mr. Fletcher himself, and his turn out where that is in the process, before we are comfortable going in and build that. The project has been accepted by Urban Drainage and Public Health District, we're just waiting for that final piece of information.
Because they said that if you see a comment or some letter that everything's being held up here, because Fletcher is ready to move, but they, we have not seen no return of paperwork they sent forward.
I will, if you guys, I'll have Kate Kramer, I'm sitting here on listening, and I'll get a copy of that, because I'm not aware of that letter.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the second issue that deals with San Creek also, that, uh, Friday the twenty-seventh is, uh, the San Creek celebration, and Amory is Star Cave Ranch, and, uh, the honoring Jeff Ward as the volunteer partner, Sunacore Energy USA as the sustainable partner, and GoCo as the funding partner. And everybody on our city council should have received an invitation to that event, but they said they have not received any R S V Ps from anybody from city council. Uh, is, is anybody who's seen the invitation to go to the Sunacore, I mean, uh, San Creek event?
And I need you to talk to them, because they don't want you to talk at it, so that's pretty different.
Have you seen your R S V that?
I've talked to all of them.
Okay. Okay, and that's, uh, Friday the twenty-seventh, from five to five, is Star Cave Ranch, out at Morrison Nature Center. And, uh, it's going to be, uh, the three mayors and the three M Ts will be there to talk as the Amorys, uh, I, being a real big participant in San Creek, I would like to see a good participation from the city council, of those in town, too. And the third item is Rotary Club, uh, has asked for our member, whoever's designated, and I feel that they only just dominate, um, they would love to see you at the meeting, because they really want, uh, uh, Commerce City City Council president, and, um, I said that, uh, don't worry, Dominic will be the one to speak. I hope I have to speak well to you.
Okay.
Uh, I feel like, uh, yeah, uh, a discussion about budget items, that's why I had anything going in the past a couple times, just because we hadn't gotten after it, or didn't know what was going on with the Amorys, the budget discussion on that.
I thought we had budgeted the budget for, uh...
It was like under the belt.
Yes, it was. But in this budget we have there, it actually shows a membership for, uh, member from council, we have a thousand dollars on it.
We had that, that time, we pushed back into the budget meeting to see if it was a, uh, budget item that we all want to do, and we pushed it to a further date. It may be in there, but it hasn't been approved yet. Yeah.
Exactly. Well, I would like to make a proposal to send that forward as a budget item, because just like the Denver Hispanic Chamber of Commerce has been asking for a membership from Commerce City, Rotary is one of the most important organizations in Commerce City that do a lot of good, and us not having a presence on it, there was a presence before, why wouldn't we spend that money to send somebody to Rotary with the good they do for Commerce City residents?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, on that Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, um, that was something that I worked attending regularly, but, um, when you were off council, Mr. Bullock, it was cut from the budget, so I was no longer able to participate in that, so it's something that we can certainly discuss, discuss at the, um, at the, at the budget retreat, but, you know, we had to make cuts, you know, we agreed everyone else was going to make cuts, we were going to make cuts too, so that was one of the things that was cut. So we decided to bring that back, I mean, more than half, we go back to serving on that, and I enjoyed it, but it was something that was cut from the budget, so that's why we're no longer attending that.
But Rotary was never cut from the budget.
Actually, you know the Hispanic Chamber?
I know, I know, I know the best, but Rotary wasn't cut from the budget. We've always had a presence on Rotary, even when the person didn't attend, but it has never been cut from the budget, and if it was, I was making the suggestion, and I'm asking for a vote from council now to, uh, reestablish the person on this council to Rotary, because us not having a presence on Rotary is a, is a big minus for this council in Commerce City. They're asking for us to send someone, the school board sent someone, the water board has someone on it, the council should have a, a presence on Rotary.
And it would be my thought that we're so close to budget now, to make a decision now, and we're only a few weeks, we're doing it or not, we, I'm not sure, this is one of those items that's, needs to be handled, I mean, Mr. Mariano, do you have?
I would just suggest that, since we're having, uh, legislative, like, discussion next week, that we can have a discussion there.
Okay, is that fair to you, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, but I was just wondering, when did we table this, or did you do discussion? When is back in March?
Uh, I, I remember bringing it up, and, uh, it was tabled then, um, but, yeah, we, it wasn't a definite set date on when we would revisit it.
Okay, I know, uh, for local council that we, uh, bringing up with the legislative budget, but, uh, it is something that I'm going to be a stickler on, I really do believe we need a presence on Rotary.
Mr. Mayor, I need to, uh, verify, but I didn't think that, that there is money in this form, but, so I think I need to verify.
And the same thing, if there is, that's fine, but we're so close to budget now, taking one item out, this present title, we're without any, making that decision anyway, doesn't seem to make a lot of, um, so Mr. Mariano's okay with it, Mr. Bullock is very old, we can, we can do it at that point, one week's not going to make much difference, but what needs to be done in that conversation is, is whoever gets appointed needs to realize that everybody's equal apart, they're being on the place, and part of being part of Rotary. Now, is that okay with Mr. Mariano, okay with Mr. Bullock?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Benson?
Yes, I guess this is the proper place to bring this up, of course, but, uh, then we have an annual, uh, International Bridge Tunnel and Perifrost Association, uh, convention, uh, that's, uh, members of the board, if you're setting your eye to it here, this is not beginning September, San Diego is no cost to the city whatsoever, and is anyone on council having objection to that?
No.
And this is the perfect place to bring out that it is, right, I would do that. Anyone have any concerns with Mr. Benson, well, he's on deck there, and it is free, it is, I should say it's free, it's being, it's a no cost to the city, it's not free in four seventy basis, but we get a lot of education out of it, that's to be back to piles of information from the T S E's that are left. I do not see any discussion in council, so I would think it's been a good experience.
Thank you. And, you know, is that all?
No, just...
Okay.
Um, I just have one request for council also, and only because, um, to kind of call me on where, we all serve on so many different committees, if it would be possible, for every committee that we serve on, if, when you could get the agenda for that meeting, and all this, I would think, most of us get those agendas electronically, if you could forward that agenda to the entire council, just the agenda, not what, um, but just the agenda, so that the interested people can look at it, the people who are not interested can delete it, um, sometimes it, it helps, because there's been questions that I've had in different meetings, where I didn't realize something had taken place, and I seen the agenda, and I said, oh, yeah, that's someone else's thing. So, is anyone from council who's there on the committee, Mr. Mariano?
The only other recommendation I would make with that is that, um, during reports, we start giving more of a report on the committees that we sit on, uh, I mean, it's good to say we know where we're going, and, um, I, I think it would be important to also, I think, so we are all aware of...
Is anyone on council having a challenge with reporting back a short summary of what went on back prior week, you know, for that, short, doesn't need to be really detailed to say, this is what we discussed, you have challenges with that, Mr. Bullock?
When you pass to send the agenda in, like, my San Creek agenda forwarded to the whole council?
Yes.
Okay, and everybody on council will be doing that?
Yes, I'm here committed, so if you sort of, like, Mr. McAldowney and Mr. Benson serve on Dr. Pop, you don't both have to send it, you make a decision as to who sends it.
Different committees.
It's different, but if you both go to the same meeting, only one of you would have to send that agenda.
Regular, regular, regular on the...
Yes, exactly. And I'm not looking for all the detailed stuff that goes with it, just strictly the agenda, which is, as an example, this is my air quality, it just lists three items on the agenda, because I know with air quality, you probably get forty pages electronic, that's not what I'm looking for, I don't want to see all that. If somebody wants to see the backup material, they can get...
Somebody wants to see the backup material, they can give that to whoever's on that committee and ask for it. Is that okay, Mr. Benson?
So, just do you send in the agenda, or send in the report?
Yeah, and again, just the agenda, you know, let's not worry us in information. Okay, that's great. Okay, next two reports, Mr. Gallagher.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clay.
No report.
Oh. Mr. Bullock.
I don't know if you know, if you want to go out there and look at my car, it really looks good. We have a new car wash in town, and it's a very car wash right over there by Chipotle. It's opened up, it was, uh, yesterday was its grand, was its first day opening, they're going to have a grand opening down the road some, but they do a fantastic job, and the owner of it, Sherry, Sherry Valentine, she wants the city come over and see what it looks like, they have a really nice looking car. And if you don't believe it, just go out and stand around my car, it looks great. What is that cost? Um, they have a, they have a whole menu of costs.
Okay.
And if you go from like four dollars all the way up to a hundred and fifty for a full detail and everything like that, but they have a really nice operation there, with closed, heated garages, do detailing, and a very fast and experienced staff. And yesterday, they had about twenty people out there, everybody's car got just premium condition, uh, kitchen. So, uh, I was up to everybody's car to look to visit my stuff.
Good, no, and it's, it's nice to have a new business open up in the city. So, we have this book?
Yep.
Mr. McAldowney.
Uh, we're, we're the, um, one of the, the, our department, we're just in a session with council, we'll pass one tonight, um, a couple hours of time, most back to, then overview, uh, current, uh, impact of that for closely two years, uh, when you made a whole margin, and, and pretty overdue, uh, good discussion relative to sixty-sixty-one, one-on-one, uh, other opportunities for, uh, partnering and enhancing and sustaining communication between our department and the council, so, we just, uh, thanks to those that will attend and, uh, finish the party, if we have any questions.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, just wanted to thank, uh, the police department and U.C. for a job well done, and all the employees that helped with the Miami Music Festival, very consecutive year, and, uh, I've not heard any complaints. Actually, on Channel Four News, they said, as usual, it ran very swiftly. Thank you.
Mr. Reno.
Uh, in the spirit of my recent recommendation, um, on Wednesday, the eleventh was the housing authority meeting, um, some really exciting stuff going on with the housing authority, they're looking at completely redeveloping and looking at a comprehensive approach of where their goals, uh, where they're going, um, it's, it's really great to see, um, and they are taking, looking at other housing authorities in neighboring cities and seeing what they're doing, getting some ideas, so that's a, a, a very, a very good process that they've started, and it's going along very well. Um, on Tuesday, August tenth, was the cultural council meeting, and I have to say that out of all the boys that I've served on, this has been the most exciting, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's a very newly engaged board, it's very young, um, it's, uh, they're doing really cool things, uh, they, uh, just got the last outreach, um, they had, uh, members of the community give input on their new logo, logo, and their new, uh, kind of branding, so it's, uh, it was really cool to see that, we, uh, offered up some cultural attendees, get people, um, intrigued and, and had little surveys on what they liked to see from cultural council, uh, we're looking at doing a lot of things, like, uh, moving from the park, uh, just a lot of really cool cultural, uh, opportunities for us, and so, really excited about that board.
Mr. Benson.
Yes, well, starting with last week, the, uh, pharmacy alone, and much with, uh, Mr. Clay and John McCassie, who's the acting executive director of E-470, and we discussed the issue of E-470 paying for the rent on South Ground Tower on all of Westbound, paying over, uh, and then E-470 recognizes that that's obligations, it's a matter of attending, attending one that's under the ground when we get that included in the budget. And hopefully, our budget policy, E-470 in December, will get some money included for that, uh, which on the, uh, as well, we have E-470 meeting where, as I said, one of the main things we talked about was the fact that E-470 has a hundred million dollars in debt service, so we got a hundred thirty million dollars for the budget, thirty million is operating expenses, a hundred million of that is debt service now, uh, we talked about amendment six, you got a hundred million dollars in debt service every year, you've got to pay attention to what they can do to you, and that's what E-470 is doing. The one thing, uh, you know, the U.S. Constitution, the state constitution says that you can't pass a law that impairs, uh, contracts, and that you make it impossible for an entity, uh, to pay back his revenue lines. I, I think what's going to happen in any of these past, the governor has the ability to submit in arguments or questions to the, uh, Supreme Court, and that's what's going to happen in the, where any of these things pass, the governor's going to ask new questions to the Supreme Court, they're going to answer them, maybe, maybe they'll concern their constitution now, I think that's all that they, it's very exact, do you understand that, actually? We have a constitution out to either state or federal, so I don't know what's about to happen, but, uh, get ready. Of course, we have the Niner Park Outreach, and we're going to back some personal relations, we're going to have another outstanding job on that. Also, I wanted to bring up, um, we haven't had an outreach in reunion in three years, and I would like to see, um, we alternate between, uh, River Run, perhaps the Ventura era area, and, uh, reunion, uh, every year on, instead of just doing it every year in River Run. Is your council discussed that at all?
Yeah, I think, uh, I don't think that, I think that would be a good idea. Yeah, and, 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 next year we can have, we had one in South Lawn in oh seven, so maybe we could have, we have to check with the reunion metro district to make sure that that, uh, property, you know, soccer fields in that area are available, I'd like to see that happen, so that we direct staff to contact reunion metro district. I see, up here, we can coordinate that.
Yeah, I think at some point, and I think we have to come back to it, um, with the discussion about rotation, I think Niner Park is an obvious choice for central location or, or Southern Tower, but I think, we talked pretty definitely rotate that, and whether it's reunion, Ventura, or otherwise, we've got some, um, good locations that are, is there a potential department, you know, the school, the school is for one location, you've obviously got, uh, probably the facilities that are, you know, inside the city, or Stewart, or Ternary, like, could, could help as well. That's a really good idea, and I think we should follow that.
Also, on the, uh...
Mary, we're just going to pass that to you, okay?
Mr. Benson.
All right. Also, on fourteenth, uh, which had the one law, and you go to use the best, uh, I just wish that somebody could give these bands a lesson in geography, because how many times did I hear hello Denver, it's like chalk, creating on a blackboard, and then don't you understand where you are in the government, it's just, that's so hard. Also, on, uh, September twenty-second, we're going to have a war to meet at the, uh, Second Street Elementary School, which is where we had all of them. I wanted to bring up something that appeared at the, uh, latest issue of Westward, apparently on, uh, the twenty-first of August, and they're supporting this park for having the Cannabis Festiva. Um, and there was a plane flying around a music festival, it said, might go up or something like that, and it was a gross society or something, but, and that costs money to hire a plane to hire enough of those bands. They, they, their business is a big business, you know, it makes sense, they make a lot of money, like, so, if anybody wants to go to the Cannabis Festiva, um, you can go to Park and, and we're sure that everybody's going to be having a good time.
I hope your city council members are there for you, taking your foot off there.
You've got to check it out, sure, it's going up and up.
So, I'm going to let it live right down the street from it.
Right, and I know it's going to be like the one they had down there.
Even, even at the music festival, I think I heard people talking about this, and you can almost get hot, you just stand, and, 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 and it's all, uh, very, very strong, you know, I don't, I don't like this at all. You want to stop that?
No.
No, no, I mean, well, because I understand that...
I've just got a few jokes that I want to tell you, but I don't want to...
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's not put that over the air, okay, bless, that's all, thank you, thank you. Mr. Carson?
Uh, that's Wednesday, I also attended the meeting of the housing authorities, and, uh, it is very exciting to be down next week. Uh, Mr. Reno and I had to meet early, uh, so that we could arrive late at the future fire department, I, I also would like to thank, uh, the fire department for, I mean, they're not, uh, they, uh, they, it was something that I think was wrong to do in the last week, and I think that they are, and the fire department, we need to, to build and block and everything, so, let's be merciful.
Mr. Clay.
Yes, I too attended the, uh, meeting of the fire districts, and, uh, that station, now their station eight brand new, was just beautiful, I stayed with the art facility, unbelievable, um, you know, and they did that completely, you know, they basically paid cash for that station, you know, the reserves that they had built up for a very long time, and so, you know, we really owe our fire district a great debt of gratitude for what they've done, so, it continues to be unbelievable, um, volunteering nine days a day, twenty-four hours a day, you know, right now, they're in recruiting phase, so of course they'll need people to come on board and help out, but, uh, my thanks to Ken Cober and Mama Pan and Paul Parkman, and all of the guys that were there to, uh, host us and give us a tour afterwards of the district, and city manager, and we also attended that as well, um, I think Tommy was there as well. So, one thanks staff, and just really want to thank the fire district for hosting us, and for the presentations that they put on about everything that they've been doing for the last several years, and how they're working so hard to continue to serve the people, um, as always, they've been in the south, but of course, as we expand farther and farther, we have more and more homes in the north, you know, they're, they're looking to find ways to serve the north as well, and they're doing their really relatively well amounts of money, so, um, they're really to be committed. Um, also, I want to thank, um, all the staff and everyone that was involved in the neighborhood outreach, um, I've been told that the numbers are pretty huge, so, thanks to everyone that was involved in that, um, the one in the south, the fire department always seems to do extremely well, and that excited us, the opportunity to, uh, rotate around in the northern area, um, you know, with the outreach, I think that's a great idea. Last but not least, the music festival, um, everyone knows I get pretty excited about that every year, but, uh, it went extremely well, and unlike last year where we did have some citizens upset because it went a little bit late, that did not happen this year, and it was done in a very decent hour, I did not receive one phone call, that was negative, every single person that talked to me said it was great, it was well managed, it didn't go too late, they were excited, the bands were great, the place was clean, I mean, I got nothing but compliments about it, so, it was really great this year, so thanks to staff, thanks to AEG, thanks to Crunky, thanks to everybody that was involved, police departments, you know, just everybody that's involved in making that safe and really fun event. Um, I would, of course, be able to host that for many years to come, so, thank you.
Well, here's something else, here's something. Uh, I was, uh, Mr. Peter reminded me that, uh, we have a rap meeting tomorrow night, um, five-thirty till, at eight, and it's going to be a tour, after a brief meeting, we're going to have a tour of the arsenal, the city, all the changes that have been made, so if anybody in council would like to come out there for the rap meeting, um, five-thirty at W-110, and, um, I was also at the fire meeting and the outreach, and both of them were fantastic.
Who wants to show up for the rap tomorrow?
Tomorrow night is five o'clock, five-thirty is the arsenal, building one ten. There's only building out there now.
Okay, and thanks to the, uh, AC and DM on the executive board, they're, they're meeting, they're also doing fairly well, they actually have some new people coming in, and they're actually over-holding, which is pretty nice. Um, I just, fire department, and also the outreach and the music festival was phenomenal. Uh, we, my wife and I were probably the oldest people there, um, but we had all, and the kids just thought it was cool that there were old people there, weren't having like heart attacks, so, so that was really cool. Um, I've been in college, this governor's regional mayor college in council, and though I don't, I don't have a real active part, it's been really important to me, cause, uh, right now, they're staying regional, um, and my thought is that they need to stay regional, they need to be putting all of their marks and all of their points on a regional level, because if they go to a city responsibility for ozone and some of the other stuff, we could get hurt real bad, because we shifted the highway with our industrial area in the south, um, you know, we could have to do a lot of stuff. They did a three-hour class on modeling and ozone, uh, I can't even imagine, but I just sat through it and understood about this much of it, but at least I was there taking our city's part in it, because every once in a while, they get around to, let's get rid of oil and gasoline, and I draw them back, um, but, and so that, that's been going on, and, uh, the one thing I'm really excited about is that I'm happily speaking for the second time at the naturalization ceremony for people from other countries who have come through the system and become naturalized citizens of America, and I'm extra excited about this one because my daughter-in-law will become American citizen on Friday, and I get to talk at the ceremony again, which is wonderful. Uh, if there be no further business come forth before, if it will be adjourned, please God save. Oh, I did forget one thing, there's an article in the paper, uh, China overtook Japan in second quarter as number two economy, uh, Japan's been number two since nineteen sixty-eight, no one expected China to take that position for a decent other year, and they've actually surpassed, uh, next one will be surpassing will be us. In the world, uh, unbelievable...